Thank you all for coming. We're all wearing masks, but it does feel good to be in the same room and to see people. I'm not sure if this is going to be our regular way of doing things or if we'll go back to Zoom, but I really felt like it had been a long time since people had been able to come and speak to us face to face. And so I'm glad that you all showed up. And I am going to start the regular July 7th council meeting for City of Eureka. And before I open it, I do want to let everybody know that this was supposed to be the budget meeting, but it's not on the agenda. It got moved to a special meeting on Monday, the 13th at 3:00 PM. If you're here about the budget, you can come and speak at public comment time at the beginning. If you had comments about it, if you want to really come and watch the budget meeting, that will be here on the 13th, I think it's here, maybe Zoom, okay? Here, the 13th at 3 o'clock. Now I will officially start our session and ask for roll call. Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison is absent tonight. Councilmember Bregel?
Here.
All right, and Mr. City Attorney Black, we did not even have us close sessions, so we have nothing to report out today. Oh, but I do need to go back to the Pledge of Allegiance, which I just took over. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which we can all say in unison now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so for Mayor's announcements today, I don't really have a lot. This was a very, we just passed 4th of July, which was a very loud 4th of July. Not beloved by all necessarily. It felt like there was a, the nerves are frayed and people needed to blow things up. And I seriously hope this is the only year that happens. Because that can't, that can't continue forever. But other than that, it is nice to see summer. It is nice to see all of you all in the room. We just had a discussion at the last council meeting at 5 o'clock about diversity and inclusion plan, which I think we are all really excited to get started and to engage the community in. So please, if there are opportunities to participate, we would love for you to join us with that. And I would like at this time to invite our Community Services Supervisor Jeff Davis up. We are going to start with a program from Uplift, which is always a great way to start and/or end a meeting. It puts us in a good mood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here to give a update on the Uplift Eureka and kind of what we've been up to since the COVID outbreak. So I think in the last council report that I presented, I did mention that due to safety concerns surrounding the COVID outbreak, we needed to, staff decided to temporarily suspend much of the programming due to safety concerns. We had a, the staff had an April Pathway to Payday scheduled and that needed to be postponed. We also had to temporarily suspend our job skills training program. Staff is pleased to announce that that program has been re-implemented. It's with modifications. So it's smaller group sizes. The program is no longer providing transportation at this time, and we've implemented some safety measures that were approved in our reopening plan by the county. Last week was the first week of our beautification team, and it was met with a lot of thank yous and a lot of community support from folks. So we're down in Old Town, and we've made a couple of other modifications, not so much for safety. We're starting earlier in the morning now, so we're beginning at about 8:30 in the morning. So we are going out and, you know, removing trash and doing these beautifications before some of the businesses open up. We've been working very closely with the CSSET team to identify areas where there's been some complaints and reported trash and debris being left around. So this is the second week that program has been re-implemented, and so far there's been a great success. The participants are really excited to be out there contributing with, to the community in this regard again, and getting them back a little bit closer to feeling semi-normal. The copilot program is still temporarily suspended. Our staff is working on procedures to move forward and safely re-implement this program. And so staff has also prepared a video of some interviews with community partners and some of our staff members to kind of show what we've been up to in these last couple of months. We've also housed six community members, permanently housed six community members, and provide them with supportive services in the month of between May and June, in addition to continuing to provide these supportive services to the folks, many of the folks that we've already gotten into housing. So at this point, I would like to share the video, present this video, and then I definitely have more to say afterwards. Uplift Eureka, developed by the City of Eureka, is an innovative program to support members of our community experiencing homelessness and accessing vital community resources to obtain housing, employment, and empower themselves to a better quality of life. Many components of Uplift Eureka, such as Pathway to Payday and the Job Skills Training Program. Uplift Eureka, developed by the City of Eureka, is an innovative program to support members of our community experiencing homelessness and accessing vital community resources to obtain housing, employment, and empower themselves to a better quality of life. Many components of Uplift Eureka, such as Pathway to Payday and the Job Skills Training Program, were temporarily suspended due to safety concerns surrounding the COVID outbreak. Uplift Eureka has focused on supporting community partners and vulnerable community members during these challenging times. Uplift staff continue to provide accurate current information, as well as hand sanitizer, and have implemented a facial covering donation program.
So the City of Eureka Mask Donation Program came to be when the county put the mandate out that all community members needed to be wearing masks. And it became clear that that was a service gap for the community members, our community members experiencing homelessness. We had been focusing our efforts down at St. Vincent de Paul's helping with their meal service once COVID became such a crisis in our community. And with that county mandate, it became required that anybody who was to be provided with a meal from St. Vincent's would have to be wearing a mask. So in order to ensure that our community members experiencing homelessness, we're still going to be able to receive daily meals and also, you know, stay as healthy as possible and as safe as possible through COVID. We felt it was really important to put a call out to the community to see about the possibility of getting donations of masks for these individuals so that we can keep them safe and fed.
So Uplift staff comes down daily, seven days a week, to aid both St. Vincent de Paul and Eureka Police Department with setup of closing the street down. Our community members experiencing homelessness are not allowed in the building right now due to COVID, so we closed the street down so that people are able to get a lunch and still maintain six feet of distance from one another. So we have dots spray painted every six feet to keep one person per dot in line in order to receive their meal. We also have hand washing stations set up for each patron to be able to wash their hands before they approach the table to get a meal. We are also currently engaging in a mask exchange program, so we've been getting reusable masks donated by community members specifically for this purpose. We are able to make sure that every patron at Free Meal is masked, and we are taking dirty masks and laundering them to make sure that they are sanitized before reuse.
Well, I would say just like the rest of us, the homeless community is definitely feeling the stress of all the changes out there in the community. Places that they normally go aren't open, people that they normally see on the streets aren't around. So when they come here, at least they get to see all the familiar faces from Uplift. We greet them every day. You know, it's a consistent thing in their life. Even though things have changed here at Free Meal, what's going on outside for the last two and a half months has been the same. So I think the consistency of them being able to come here, get fed, being treated with compassion, and like members of our community, I think really helps ease some of their stress that they're feeling during these times.
The community response to our mask donation program has been tremendous. I believe we've had close to 1,500 masks donated in just maybe a month's time. It's been really amazing. There, we're just regularly getting mask donations, and people understand what the purpose is for, and they're really motivated to help our community members experiencing homelessness be able to stay as safe as possible through COVID and get their daily meal. So that's been really uplifting to see that response.
The people that do donate, they're really caring and kind people. I always go, I make sure I go to the door and thank them for their donations because I do want them to know that they are appreciated and they are helping the vulnerable population and that they are really thanked by this community. Their donations are making a difference, and I hope that they know that.
The quarantine changed a lot of mindset of how Uplift could operate. Uplift's presence has grown certainly in the past year at our facility. And they would typically, early on, just be showing up right about lunchtime, and they'd do one-on-one counseling with certain people that were dining at our facility. Jeff Davis and Miles Slattery and others talked it through on how they could best utilize the fact that we have this nearby point of law gathering that could assist them greatly with the clientele that they serve. For us, it was just a blessing on the operational side to help us get a meal prepared every day. I've noticed they're very self-reliant and energetic and also quite friendly. It's become like just an extended family in a way. And that has been a big plus in itself.
Yeah, so CSSET and Uplift are our left hand, right hand, working together every single day. That we work in collaboration, we coordinate efforts with the entire group that gets food service down here, but also individuals. So if we are working for someone for housing or has mental health issues going on or even subsubuse, then obviously we collaborate on those because different approaches are needed for each individual. It's a daily collaboration that's needed. We can't really do one without the other, in my opinion, especially down here at Free Meal and work with our homeless population from an outreach standpoint and just kind of getting a feel what's going on with the homeless population each day. There may be some, a lot of mental health crisis going on that non-cops that work for outreach workers let us know about. So somebody you need to address from a mental health standpoint, or somebody's having a bad day we can check in with. But every day it's a daily collaboration, it's partnership. It's the left hand, the right hand working together, not opposing each other.
The Resource Center is here to meet the basic needs of the clients, the most vulnerable in our community, many of which are suffering from homelessness, substance use disorder, and mental health challenges. You know, I think for people that are already having difficulty meeting their basic needs, there hasn't been much difference during the COVID outbreak other than the impact that has happened from closures of service providers that provide those services for them. The Uplift program and their staff have really been engaging with some of the most vulnerable out on the streets, and they've been crucial on connecting some of our folks with housing. And, you know, that's probably the number one thing for addressing homelessness. So I'm glad to be partnering with them.
The more human contact you have with people, the better it is for them. Because many times I think a lot of why they've gone so far off is because of the lack of human contact. And so getting them used to talking to people and used to being around people in a different environment is so important. But if it were as easy as, I'm going to give you the apartment here, the keys, I'm going to pay your rent, it doesn't work.
Been able to help program participant find housing and accept a housing offer and help them access that housing with some financial support. From that point forward, we're there to provide supportive services for that individual to continue to assist them accessing community resources and supports and to support them in tackling those barriers that they've been facing that were factors in their not being able to access housing. So that would include referring individuals to RCAA for one-on-one financial counseling so they can work on their credit if their credit was an issue. Referring individuals to local health organizations such as Open Door, St. Joe's, so they can have the medical behavioral health supports that they need. Referring individuals to the county's Department of Health and Human Services so they can access the wide array of supports and services that the county provides. Building a supportive relationship with that individual so we can advocate for them and that we can continue to help them build their stability in that housing.
You guys have Larry Alexander, right? And we also have, right? It's made it easier for me because I can talk to Larry. Having that connection also makes it really cool because he can call me and say, hey, we need help with this. So I know when he's asking me for something, I trust his judgment. I go, oh, these guys, whatever does they need, if we got it, we need to do it. Having like that mutual connection, it makes it so much easier just to talk about what's going on and how can we work together.
I'm Mark Riley. I've been working with Uplift here for a while now, and basically what we try to do is get folks into affordable housing to where they can have a comfortable, safe place to stay. My father and I are the ones that run the properties. I manage it, I manage the house, I'm onsite daily, I interact with my tenants daily, make sure everything's okay, everything's running smoothly, they have all the necessities that they need. So basically what happened is when I moved here, I realized how far out of reach rent was, and for, even me especially. So we decided to purchase a property, and we just so happened to, you know, realize that there was a need, and so we started renting out rooms. And the response from the community has been really, really strong. There's a huge need. I mean, I very, very seldom empty for more than a day or two. You know, and it's just worked out really well for everybody involved. You know, this whole thing's been a really good experience. We've been able to, you know, find people, you know, there's really good people out there that are quality folks that maybe would have an opportunity in other circumstances to have a place to stay, you know, due to bad credit, things like that. So we try to work with the individuals based on their personality, their character, you know. And the idea is to really help people that are willing to help themselves. You know, there's a lot of folks who are in a position that they aren't necessarily able to, you know, get into quote-unquote "proper" housing. But, you know, for us, it's more about how can we help those around us and, you know, improve the community and give people an opportunity. Working with Uplift has been fantastic. Everybody that works there is great people. You know, they are a program that's here in the community to help our local community grow and become a better, safer place. And I can't say enough good things about what they do. You know, they're very communicative, we have, you know, no issues. I, it's fantastic. I really have nothing negative to say about it, only positive. I mean, I could go on for all day about how great everything is, but the bottom line is, you know, working with you guys, we work well together. We have good communication, and we're able to help a lot of folks out.
So we have been doing quite a bit out, you know, staff has been doing quite a bit out in the community. And really, I think that the key to this success is these collaborations with these community partners. The Department of Health and Human Services has been a huge partner. Since this COVID outbreak has occurred, we've been working with the home program closer than ever. Even before this pandemic occurred, city and county staff had been meeting up to see how our job skills training program and our Helping Hubble could really collaborate more, how we could complement the programs more and maybe less of the duplication of services. And once things get a little safer out there, I think we want to pick up right where we left off. Having a partnership like that has been crucial for the success of this program. With, I believe it was, oh, the last budget meeting, Director Millar had presented, I think the last slide, the new frontier slide, kind of talked about the CSSET team and Uplift Eureka. Staff is pleased to announce that we have received another grant, conditionally awarded another grant that's administered by the Department of Health and Human Services in the county, the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. It's actually the largest grant that the Uplift or CAPE has ever received. It's over, it's $344,000. That funding is going to further our capabilities of providing housing assistance and then also expanding and enhancing what we're doing out there, what staff is doing out there right now. This is going to allow us, would allow staff to enhance our homeless outreach worker position, our outreach workers. We currently have, I believe, two part-time outreach workers. This would allow us to expand to potentially a full-time position, funded outside of the general fund for up to two years. And then really, currently, they're, these homeless outreach workers are working hand-in-hand with the CSSET team and either responding to calls, some calls with them. And then also there's times where officers respond to calls and call, you know, refer to one of our outreach workers that will go on the scene. And we really do want, staff would like to enhance what we're doing out there as far as responding to issues surrounding homelessness, also mental health crises, and then addiction, calls regarding addiction. This HHAP grant, it was, would also allow us to expand our capacity and get a mental health specialist or a behavioral health specialist to go out and accompany the, these outreach workers and provide those services. Currently, the outreach workers are, both of them are CPR and first aid certified. Staff has secured funding through alternative funding sources, grants to provide additional training. Staff would like to provide, you know, trainings to further enhance their capabilities, but then also their expertise in things. Perhaps, you know, EMT, that sort of training that would really enable these folks to go out and to respond to these crises as they're happening. It's something that we've experienced success with the homeless outreach workers, and this would just really expand and enhance those capabilities. We're definitely looking forward to that. Let's see. Also, one of the, one of the key things right now that Uplift Eureka is doing is providing resources, connecting, you know, connecting community members to vital community resources and also providing them services as far as employment and housing. With that being said, the CAPE and the Uplift programs are planning to move from the Community Services Department over to the Economic Development Department. This, having the Uplift Housing Program and the Housing Division under one department is going to enhance our capabilities. It's going to allow us to better serve this community more efficiently, get folks into housing, identify those housing opportunities, and also enable us to make better connections with the housing authority, also allow more landlord incentives and those things. And all of these, this is all being provided through funding outside of the general fund, through grants and other alternative funding sources. Yes, so we're really pleased with the success, but we know that our job is nowhere near done, and we continue to, you know, look forward and look forward to serving this community even more than we already have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
I was just wondering, for the Street Art Festival, I know that you're, the beautification team primarily works in Old Town, but this year the Street Art Festival is going to be in Henderson Center. And I was just wondering if, you know, given that there might be more use of Henderson Center for people like going on daily mural tours, hopefully they won't drop their trash, but, you know, more people, potentially a little bit more impact. I was wondering if that would be something that you could consider collaborating with the Street Art Festival on?
Yeah, so when the job skills training and the city beautification team, before the COVID outbreak, we have gone to Henderson Center multiple times. We've gone through, all over the city really, on city property, removed graffiti, removed thousands of pounds of trash. I think logistically, we could, yeah, I believe we could do that. Just since we cannot, we're not able to provide transportation right now, that can, that can be a barrier for some folks. But I think we, I think we could arrange, you know, a special, special project out into Henderson Center once again.
Councilmember Castellano?
I believe I heard that you all helped facilitate a number of people getting into housing in the last few weeks.
Yeah, well, it was in, in May and June, it was, we helped permanently house six community members in, you know, securing the housing and providing those supportive services in addition to providing the supportive services for folks that we've already, you know, previously had passed. In addition to those six community members, we're currently working, I believe, with seven community members actively looking for housing. These community members are facing significant barriers. And so it's just more than just having a cat or a dog. There's, there's a lot going on. We operate under the, we follow the housing first principles, but that doesn't necessarily need, mean that landlords and property management companies do the same. So we really are, we're working to get folks into adequate permanent housing. And like I had mentioned earlier, this move, having the, our housing program and the city's Housing Division in one department is greatly going to improve our efficiency doing so.
Councilmember Mezner, do you have any questions? Or comments? I guess we can do comments since the report.
Thank you. I just am really proud of this team, and I, you guys have done a lot of hard work. And I know with, you've been working hand-in-hand with CSSET and, as well, and then just trying to work with the county. And I know COVID has set you guys back a little bit, but you're continuing to find creative and alternative ways to, you know, really move and work with people even in the midst of it. So I just appreciate all your hard work. You guys are an amazing team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other final comments for Mr. Davis before? So grateful, as we say at Eureka High, you guys kick ass. Thank you.
I'd also like to, my final comment would be this, this video initially was a little bit longer, and we, due to time constraints, we needed to edit it down. There's some folks that were interviewed that didn't make the final cut. We have Sarah Cooper, one of our assistant coordinators. The CSSET Ranger Gagnon was interviewed. There's quite a few others, but those two gave really good interviews. And really, it's just, especially down at St. Vincent de Paul, seeing Uplift and CSSET working hand-in-hand together is really, really a special thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, his presentation reminded me that Bob from St. Vincent de Paul has asked me to write him a letter of support for a grant that he's writing to do some repair to the facility and to get some bedding for them to use as an emergency shelter. If we can get consensus, then I can sign the whole city's name and not just mine. Right? Yes? Yes, Heidi, you okay with that?
Yes, yes.
I figured that was good. Thank you very much. It's nice to be able to sign the whole, everybody's name. And with that, we will conclude this part of the meeting and move on to public comment period. So if there's anybody here who wishes to speak about an item that's not on the agenda, we have three minutes. Do we have anybody on the speaker list?
Mayor, no one has signed up, but I do have somebody who wished to make public comment to phone it in, so I'll give them a call.
Excellent. While you give them a call, I will tell everybody that the non-motorized transportation planning update was in the agenda twice. It's supposed to be under Reports in Section D, which it still is, but it was called Trail Planning. So non-motorized transportation planning is actually supposed to be Item D1. Thank you for reminding me that that change was.
Hello, Mr. Fisk. It is now time for open public comment, and you have three minutes.
Okay, great. Hello again, councilmembers. This is Colin Fisk. I recently sent you the results of a survey that was conducted by CRTP about how Humboldt County residents are getting around during the pandemic and what changes that they want to see in the streets as a result. 201 people responded, including 64 Eureka residents. And you already have the results, so I won't go over them again in detail, but I wanted to highlight a few things. so I won't go over them again in detail, but wanted to highlight a few things. People are walking and biking more and driving less. A lot of people identified places that they have trouble social distancing, and people overwhelmingly support allowing restaurants to put outdoor dining in parking areas, programming traffic signals for automatic walk signs, and implementing a local slow streets program. The city has already reduced barriers to outdoor dining, which is great. However, the survey results demonstrate that there's a need and a desire for the city to do more to improve the safety and comfort of streets during the pandemic. Director Groving indicated to me that his staff are reviewing the survey results for actionable items, and we would ask that you direct staff to report back to the council with the following. One is the results of their review of specific locations identified as posing social distancing problems by Eureka residents who responded to the survey and proposed ways to address the problems, which could include temporary sidewalk or bike lane extensions or slow streets treatments. Areas that are identified where those kinds of things aren't applicable, like trails, are an indication that existing recreational facilities aren't sufficient during the pandemic, and local residential streets should be made more comfortable for walking, biking, and playing to encourage more dispersed recreation. Two is the results of staff's review of specific locations proposed for slow streets treatments by Eureka residents and the proposal for implementing the slow streets program. I would also ask the following of the council. One is to encourage encroachments for outdoor dining in parking areas with sidewalks as a last resort. When tables are placed on sidewalks, we need to ensure that pedestrians have enough space to pass the tables and each other with that six feet of distance. And the next is to reprogram all city-controlled traffic facilities to provide an automatic walk sign. Early in the pandemic, apparently, city-controlled traffic signals in Eureka were actually reprogrammed away from an automatic walk to require people to press a button, which is the opposite of measures that were being taken around the country to reduce the spread of disease, and I hope we don't do that again. So I would urge you to take action on these items as quickly as possible. People who get around Eureka without a car, either by choice or by necessity, and there are quite a few of them, need you to take this seriously. And I also believe that the, the lack of opportunity for high-quality dispersed recreation in neighborhoods is encouraging some of the violations we've seen of public health guidelines with concentrated recreational trails and team sports and so forth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Well timed. Perfectly timed. Do we have any other public comment?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the presentation. It was wonderful to see the improvements in the program and all the work that they've been doing. I also would like to ask you to consider having public comment on every agenda item, which is what is the way the Brown Act is designed and set up. And I'd be happy to send that information to your attorney or ask your attorney, if you would ask your attorney to double-check that for you. Thank you.
Do you have any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back, and we will go on to Item A1 under public hearings, and this is affordable housing projects on city-owned sites. And we are going to welcome Senior Planner Castellano. Welcome to your first presentation as a part of the City of Eureka.
Thank you. Just not used to wearing the mask this whole time, so I gotta catch my breath.
It's a little warm, too.
All right, good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Seaman, my name is Kaitlin Castellano, and I'm a new senior planner in the Development Services Department. The project before you tonight for your consideration is the Affordable Housing on City-Own-Sites Project. The proposed project is to release a request for proposals, also known as an RFP, for, to develop affordable housing on three city-owned sites. The first site is located at Sunny and Myrtle Avenues. The second site is located at Eighth and G Streets, and I would like to clarify that the APN for the Eighth and G Street site wasn't correct on the agenda summary, but it was correct on the hearing notice, resolution, and draft RFP, so apologies for that. And the third site is located at Sixth and M Streets. So besides wanting to show you our pre-RFP, draft RFP that we have ready to go, really what we're here tonight is we're looking for direction or confirmation regarding the ability to remove and reduce public parking for the Affordable Housing RFP, which is ready to issue. And secondly, we're here to hold a public hearing for the Eighth and G Street parking lot because it is part of the Parking Assessment District. So how did we get here? The 2040 Eureka General Plan process was initiated in 2012 and was adopted in October of 2018. Per State Housing Element Law in California Government Code Section 65580, the housing element is a required element of the general plan. And our housing element was updated for the sixth regional housing need cycle, which is a state mandate for you to plan for housing and certain affordability levels. The housing element is updated every eight years, and the planning horizon for our housing element is August 31, 2019 to August 31, 2027. There were some outreach that happened for this housing element. Workshop in April 2019. The draft housing element was posted to the website in July 2019 for public comments, and I believe it was also sent to various organizations for comments. There was a Joint City Council Planning Commission workshop twice in October, the Planning Commission Public Hearing in November of 2019, and then it was adopted by council in December of last year. The housing element was certified by the Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD, in March of this year, and it was certified based on the findings, I'm sorry, so the findings for certification were based on four implementation programs in our housing element, the top two of which was Implementation H34, the Affordable Housing on Publicly Owned Properties, which is the project before you. And the second one, the first one was the H35, which is our Implementation Monitoring Program for all 35 housing element programs. So we intend to release this RFP this month. We actually have to, according to our housing element. We're going to stay on schedule. And also, the city does plan to release RFPs for the development of 12 city-owned sites, nine of which are parking lots, for affordable housing over the next several years with the goal of developing at least 315 deed restricted affordable units by 2028 in order to meet our goals of our housing element. So briefly, I'll go over the critical dates of our RFP. We plan to release it this Friday. We do have a list of 130 affordable housing developers that we received from HCD, so that's really exciting. We're going to have a pre-optional Zoom meeting to answer questions on the RFP, you know, August 5th. Submittal deadline for written questions is shortly after that. Then we will release an addendum to answer any questions on the RFP in mid-August. Proposals will be due mid-September. Then we'll have a selection panel review at the end of September, and then the recommended developers, developer or developers will be taken to you as council action, to take action for the award. So here is an area overview and location context of the three sites within the city limits, which are represented by the red balloons. Here's a closer look. So the one on, the first one is the Sunny and Myrtle site. Second is the Eighth and G site. Third is the Sixth and M site. Each site is required to have a minimum of 20 affordable units. 15 will be very low income, and five will be low income at each site, and mixed use as well as market rate units will be encouraged. So this is the first site, Sunny and Myrtle, a closer look. It's approximately 17,500 square feet. The minimum floor area ratio, also known as the FAR, required is two, which requires an approximately 35,000-square-foot building be built. Now, there are some setbacks associated with this site, so if you can imagine probably a minimum three-story structure here. Surrounding land uses include neighborhood commercial uses. There's a hair salon, restaurants, gas station, and high-density multifamily and low-density single-family residential units. There's approximately 18 parking spots here. There is no utilization data, rate data available for this lot because no utilization surveys have been done, because this lot is viewed as having very low usage, and if you examine old Google Earth images and street views, you can confirm this assessment. And to clarify how utilization rates are determined, our city traffic engineer will do counts on the number of cars parked in that parking lot during peak hours and days, typically during the summer, for a series of days, and then averages the data. And lastly, on this site, there is a wetland, as you can see, to the south, so a wetland delineation was done, and it confirmed that it is immediately adjacent, but it's not within the proposed developed area, and the report did make recommendations to enable future development, to improve site conditions, and increase wetland protection, which interested parties are encouraged to incorporate into their proposals. And then briefly, a street view. The site is very well-served by transit. It's on the Eureka Transit Systems green and purple routes. There's a large bus stop shelter immediately adjacent to it, and there's existing bikeway on Myrtle Avenue. Okay, so the second site is the Eighth and G site. It's approximately 14,400 square feet. The minimum FAR for this is three, so this would require a 43,200-square-foot building, maybe three stories, probably looking at four stories. Surrounding land uses include professional offices, high-density residential, and single-family, multifamily dwelling units, a car dealership, lots, and service, a hotel, civic institutions such as the Redwood Community Action Center, there's the Alder Grove Charter School, the Historical Society, and other commercial and retail services. Number of parking spaces here is 41, two of which are ADA compliant. The utilization rate for this lot was 11% in 2019, 16% in 2017, and 15% in 2015. Again, one more time, utilization rates are determined by the traffic engineer, counting the number of vehicles parked during peak hours and days for a series of days, and then averages the data. So as described in your agenda summary, the Eighth and G site was purchased with Parking Assessment District funds and must go through a public hearing process prior to allowing parking to be reduced or removed. As a result of us noticing, sending out a public notice for this hearing, we received six public comment letters that you have received for consideration. Here is the street view of the site. H and I Streets and Seventh and Sixth Streets are all one and two blocks from the site, which serve as the Eureka Rainbow, Gold, and Purple Bus Routes. Also, Sixth and Seventh Streets have existing Class II bikeways, and Gene E Streets are proposed Class III bikeways. Additionally, the Redwood Transit System route is only a few blocks north on Highway 101. And our last site is the Sixth and M Street site. It is 13,200 square feet in size. The minimum FAR is three, which requires an approximately 39,900-square-foot building. Surrounding land uses include high-density residential, in single-family and multifamily dwelling units, offices such as the Time Standard, Humboldt Land Title, civic institutions such as Eureka City Hall, County Social Services, I think I saw the ABC people around there too, and commercial services and retail along Highway 101 to the north. This parking lot has 33 spaces, of which one has one, it has one ADA compliance space. Utilization rate for this site is 86% in 2019, 90% in 2017, and 95% in 2016. And I won't repeat how I did the, because since I did the utilization rate the first two times. Here is the street view of Sixth and M Street. It has an existing Class II bike lane on Sixth Street. It's, and it also serves as the Eureka Purple Bus Line with bus stops located at O Street, which is two blocks east, and there's a bus stop at L Street, one block west. Also, the Rainbow and Gold Bus Lines are several blocks to the west. And again, the Redwood Transit Route is one to two blocks north on Highway 101. So staff's recommendation is to receive the report so we can release the RFP as drafted and stay on schedule as outlined in the housing element. Staff also recommends that you allow developers to choose to purchase or lease a site because by being flexible and giving developers the option to choose, it may help ensure we have a sufficient pool of RFP responses to choose from, which can also give the City of Eureka the best chance of developing affordable housing. And we recommend you hold a public hearing for site number two, Eighth and G. Again, it's required due to it being purchased with Parking Assessment Funds, but it's not required for the other two sites. And lastly, we do recommend adoption of a resolution authorizing the reduction or removal of public parking to help facilitate this affordable housing development. And some of the findings to adopt the resolution include it's consistent with our general plan and our housing element. Nearby streets can accommodate the increased parking demand. Site one and two have low utilization rates, and although site number three has a significant utilization rate, our city traffic engineer determined that if parking from this lot is distributed to street parking, two cars per block face within a one-block radius can accommodate the redistributed spaces. And lastly, the benefit to the community to provide affordable housing outweighs potential impacts to nearby on-street parking demand. So while a combined total of 96 parking spaces may be eliminated, a combined minimum of 60 affordable units will be required to be constructed, and the city will promote active collective modes of transport such as walking, biking, transit, car shares, which can all help the city meet greenhouse gas emissions targets. So one more time, here again, here is a visual of our recommendation in a, it's a nice chart. So, you know, we want you to think about whether to reduce or remove parking. Staff would recommend yes. Whether to allow a developer to lease or buy, staff would recommend yes. And as I previously said, being flexible will help ensure we receive a sufficient pool to pick from, and again, give the City of Eureka the best chance at developing an affordable housing project. So lastly, this is our recommended motion. I don't, I won't read it for you, I'll let you read it, and this concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions as well as my team in Development Services and Public Works. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Are any of these lots, we talked before when we made the housing element, about second story, leasing the air kind of things and keeping some parking, is that going to be in the RFPs for these specific ones? Are you familiar with that?
I wasn't here during that, but I do know in the appendix for the housing element, you know, the, the two sites, the, the one and two, it said, you know, this may be appropriate to remove public parking, but in like the M Street, it said it may be appropriate to leave the public parking. And so really, we are here to, if you're really strongly about keeping the public parking, then, you know, we would want to hear it now to update the RFP, so.
Councilmember Royal?
So I was just looking at these locations and thinking a little bit more about it, and I know that the, the attachment that outlines some of the elements of the Muni Code and requirements for like additional standards around architectural features and appearance, do give some provisions, but thinking about especially the location of the Eighth and G, really all of the locations, but especially that one being so close to the Eureka Inn and other like historically significant buildings very nearby, what is your take on the feasibility of adding additional provisions that it shall match neighboring architecture or like more specifications around appearance essentially?
So our regulations have quite a bit of architectural features that we request to be done. They only have to do two of, I think, like 10 or more. It's going to have to go to design review, if that's the direction that you want to go, especially for this specific site. We could update their RFP to say more points for having it blend in with the neighborhood and having similar architectural.
and having similar architectural features. We could certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you for the report. I was curious. So as many members of the public know, I converse a lot with artists. And one of the needs that comes up often amongst artists is very low-income, low-income housing for artists. And so I was just curious, you know, specifically, and this is somewhat a hypothetical, but I'm curious about it. The Eighth and G lot is very near many institutions that serve artists. So I was wondering about, you know, if there are possibilities for creating point systems related to artist housing. And many people who I know who are houseless are also artists. So, you know, this would not necessarily exclude people who are houseless. But and/or like childcare. I guess I'm just curious if we can offer the capacity for extra points for specific needs or interests or things that might serve different areas in the community.
I mean, we could. But if you start getting more specific, then that might limit the interest. And as of right now, you know, our requirement is just simply low income and very low income. And I mean, I would like to defer to maybe my management above me to see if they have anything to add. Because, Rob, do you want to come up?
Thank you.
So along the line that Caitlin's talking about. Mayor, can I get a little more?
Oh, you want a little more high, huh?
I don't want to touch it, you know.
Sorry, I'm out of chat.
Thank you. So in that regard, like Caitlin's saying, the more specific, or if we kind of get too far into that sort of thing, it might reduce the number of inquiries, or not inquiries, but responsive applications that we get. So we're trying to cast a really wide net to get a lot of interest in these to make sure that we do get these units developed. And a lot of times, it's difficult to get affordable housing to pencil. So the more opportunity we give them to do things like market-rate housing, mixed-use, et cetera, that, you know, works for that developer, probably the better response we're going to get.
I guess I would be curious if it's possible for something like bonus points, you know? So it wouldn't limit the applications. It wouldn't be like you have to have this. But if you have this, you're going to get five bonus points or something like that, if that's a possibility.
It's possible. If council wishes to give that direction to staff, we can add it to the RFP.
Councilmember Messner has some questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Messner.
Hi, thank you. So I do have a couple of questions. The first one is you did mention, planner, senior planner Castellano, you mentioned the Site Number Two, Eighth and G, that there were some incongruencies with what we have before us and then what was, what it actually was. And I don't know if I understood that. Could you clarify that for me?
Oh, sure. I had transposed the assessor parcel number wrong in the agenda summary for Site Number Two. I had the five, but it was correct in the notice and in the resolution and in the RFP.
Okay, no problem. I just wanted to make sure I had that correctly and that there was no confusion about that. Thank you for that. Secondly, you mentioned the multi-story, like some might be three stories, some might be four. And are those all within the height limits for their particular zones that we had mapped out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then also, you mentioned there are nine other city sites that we have been looking at. And did you have any general timeline for when those might be coming back to us? Those other ones?
Yes, we should be releasing RFPs every year annually. But if you give me one second, I can confirm that. Yes, so annually, by July for the next four years, we will be bringing forward at least three sites.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
I have another question. I believe all three of those are in an opportunity zone. Is there someplace in the RFP to let developers know that as an additional incentive to? Am I right, Lane? Two out of three of them are in opportunity zones. Sorry, I didn't have the map exactly right in my head.
Yeah, if that's not already in the RFP, I will make sure it's in there.
Councilmember Perdón.
So I'm curious about these other, these 100, this list of 150, what are they, contractors? It's out there. Frankly, I'm wondering, do we use the 150 every single time? Or I have a reason for that, but I'm just wondering.
So the list, it's about 130 developers. And then I think we have a couple of local ones already. But that is from HCD. They just recently started keeping a list specifically for this because the state law was updated recently, which really is trying to ramp up housing and is really holding jurisdictions accountable. So, you know, a small municipality like us, we're not going to know people nationwide or just through California. So we got that list from them specifically for something like this. And we'll also upload our RFP to, call it a CIP list, Capital Improvement. It's a nationwide list. It'll be attached to our website. I think we want to do, you know, some Facebook advertising and maybe the radio. And we really want to get the word out to see if we can get some interest.
Yeah, I was curious about that because it seems like in the past we've used local people pretty regularly. And I think it would be great. I didn't know if there was something that we could do to the RFP to get more people intrigued about it. I don't know if there's something we can do to beautify it, step it up, so that people are more from, out of the area can see where we live and they can see the value of doing something beautiful here.
Yeah, I think we can do that, especially with the new branding. I mean, this draft was completed a while ago. You know, it's been noticed twice. And I think we can definitely try to make it look prettier.
Yeah, I'd like to attract somebody from out of the area, if possible. All right, so I think we've asked the questions. Do we have anybody in the audience here for public comment on this item? Come on up.
I think we have to open a public hearing.
Mayor, can I ask that you open it as a public hearing?
I'm opening this as a public hearing, sorry. I would like public comment on the hearing.
Can you make it go down a little bit?
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Spetzler. I work for Open Door Community Health Centers. I've worked for Open Door for 41 years. And one of the things that happened as a result of the COVID situation is that we had to convert one of our sites over on Boone Street to being our testing location. And it displaced a number of clinical services that we provided at that location. And so we were feeling lucky because we had been looking at the Harland Office Building for a while. And we moved forward to lease that building. And the first question, of course, everybody had, myself included, was where's the parking? Because it's a pretty big building and we intend to move about 25 staff there and to see about 50 patients a day at that location. And so the parking, especially for staff for all day and not have to move their cars. So we relied upon the affordable, long-term, day-long parking at the Eighth and G Street location in our decision to lease the building at the Harland Office. And we thought we were doing also some good work for the city by bringing our services downtown. The site will be called Open Door Downtown. And the intent was to bring foot traffic and to bring our staff, who will someday get to go out to lunch and, you know, bring vibrancy to the city, which I think is also of a value. I mean, I work for Open Door. Our work also consists of finding housing for low-income people. And so I just wonder how much of your city parking you want to sacrifice. And I'm shocked because we relied upon this parking in order to move forward with this project. I think that's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Mosier. I'm the owner of the building at Seventh and Eighth Street. It was the former Harland Law Offices. The building itself is about 20,000 square feet. It's where Open Door plans to operate. They're going to take about 45% of the space there. But in addition to them, we have eight other businesses in that building that employ close to 25 or 30 people. So totally, there will be about 55 people that work out of there. And a lot of those people do really rely on that parking area for their employees, not so much for the people that they're invitees because there's ample parking along the streets, you know, as long as you don't park there for more than two hours at a time. But long-term parking and reasonable rates, especially with Open Door, we represented that as being the parking that the city had available when they were leasing it from us. And that was based upon my contact with the city for the last two years. But we hope that, you know, you will leave that as city parking for, you know, a long time. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, we do have someone who would like to call in to comment.
Hello, this is Linda.
I guess, Linda, this is Pam, City Clerk. And I have you on public comment if you're ready.
Yeah, can you hear me though?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Linda Gillette. And I, my agency, the California Travel Town Partnership, we rent two spaces in the building that is on the corner of Seventh and Eighth Street. We rent 634 and 636 Eighth Street. We employ right now about 10 people, but we serve about 75 families. And our staff relies on that lot in addition to the parking on the street. Another concern that I do have. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. It's probably because we're a little bit, you're delayed. If you're watching this on our live stream, it can be a little bit delayed. But we're hearing you in real time.
Should I keep talking or?
Keep going. Please do.
Okay. So one of my concerns is the handicap parking that is available in that area. I believe there's two spots in the parking lot on Eighth and G. And there's only one spot in the building in front of the office on Seventh and H. And if you take away the lot at Eighth and G, there's only going to be one handicap parking area in the whole area. So between the people that we serve and probably about 65 of the people are elderly people or disabled people that cannot walk a great distance, no more than a week, I mean, a block or two. And then if you combine that with the Open Door Clinic and their clientele, it's going to be a real hard disservice to the community if you take away this parking. And we also utilize that spot and we purchased the smart meters cards from the city. And if you take that lot away, then those cards are no use to us. So five of our, six of our agency vehicles have to be parked on the street over the weekend or long-term sometimes if the staff doesn't have to travel. And that's become an issue in that area because of the two-hour parking also. So that parking lot really is beneficial for the area. So my concern is what are you going to do with all of these employees that are employed in this area that need parking, especially during the day also? So I just wanted to express those concerns. Although we are not object to low-income housing because we know that that's badly needed in this area. But you also have to have someplace for the people that live and work in this area to be able to park.
Thank you, Linda.
And we have one more?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Fisk. We are ready for your public comment on Item A1.
Great, thank you. So councilmembers and mayor, again, this is Colin Fisk with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to say that we fully support staff's recommendations on this item. We agree with the assessment in the staff report that eliminating the identified parking spaces would not unduly impact overall parking capacity in the area and that any impact that it does have, the benefits to the community would far outweigh the harms. We also agree that developing housing in these locations is required for compliance with the city's general plan and housing element and will further the city's goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and encouraging active transportation and transit. I could go on, but suffice it to say that we encourage you to approve the resolution recommended by staff and move ahead with this project. I think that taking this action demonstrates that the council truly has the right priorities for the city, putting homes for its citizens above storage for its vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all for?
That is all? All right, I'm going to bring it back if I don't have any. Okay, I'll bring it back now for comments or a motion? Yes, sir.
Might I suggest that you close the public hearing?
Oh, and now I'll close the public hearing.
If I might, before discussion begins, I'd like to recommend that we take, split this resolution into three and adopt a resolution pertaining to each of the sites individually. I think that's cleaner going forward in terms of the record that we're making in reference to each site. And if there is any legal repercussions of adopting these resolutions, it would just keep it a lot simpler to have them split into three. So I think in terms of the recommended motion, if it comes to that and somebody wants to make that motion, I would just request that the motion be made as presented. But that, as to each motion, you reference one of the three sites. And we'll do that three times and take three votes.
Councilmember Arroyo. I did have a question after hearing that public comment. I know there is a substantial amount of work that goes into, and documentation that goes into recommending any of these sites. But given the consideration around like new medical services being offered and in light of what I've heard, is there another site of the nine waiting in the wings that we could advance more quickly and consider holding out to see? see what the utilization is of this site?
I do not know the answer to that if we could switch one out. There was a specific schedule. Now, when they developed that and you approved the housing element, they probably had some rhyme or reason, and I will let Rob talk about it.
Just to clarify, so when we did get this all set in motion, we did title reports, we, you know, had a property assessed, we did wetland delineations, so at this point in the game, we wouldn't be able to put another one into this particular package, it would have to come later. So, if council decided to take one out and save it for later, that would be one thing, but to put another one in right now, I don't think we could accommodate that and do as thorough of a job as we have with the other two.
Would there be any feasibility of renting out, leasing a portion of the site? I know it's the largest of the sites. Would that be, do you think that would be feasible or attractive to potential developers?
Oh, well, I, so are you asking if we just built on a portion of the site, kind of a thing?
Correct.
That could be possible. The other thing you could do is, you know, require that they maintain public parking on the first level and build above, but that does considerably increase the cost of building.
Definitely, sure. Okay, yeah, I just wondered what our options were. I wanted to toss out wild ideas. Thank you.
Councilmember Bergell, and then is that for Mezner, or do you have a comment?
Councilmember Mezner has a question.
And, oh, go ahead and let Heidi go first.
Heidi, would you like to go now?
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, I was actually wondering about the parking with RFP in this particular site, if that is something that is in the RFP work, if it can be added in, and I understand the extra cost with the entire bottom level being parking, that's quite a significant cost, but if there's any way to take a portion, or if there's a way to at least designate, like possibly the front part, or, you know, like actually think that through and have some designation for parking, because it does seem like that particular site, that there is some parking that's needed. And some of the cost deferment, or some of the cost increase could be also included in the parking fees, the future parking fees. So, just a thought.
Okay, Councilmember Bergell, thank you for waiting too. That was nice.
This thing is so weird tonight. So, I'm curious, and maybe, oh, Director Gerbing's not in here.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, yeah, there you are. So, I'm curious if there is any other type of mitigation we can look at for parking? Like, I hear that the two-hour parking is an issue. Yeah, it is. Is there a way that we can mitigate parking, that we can have both, where these folks have enough parking and that we can have this without costing a lot of money to the developer?
Right. We haven't looked at other alternatives yet with this, and any effort to do that would certainly delay the release of the RFP, so we have to weigh that, council has to weigh that in your deliberations tonight. We could look at that, things like...
Changing the duration of parking that's in the surrounding area, we could look at other alternatives that sometimes work and sometimes don't, like additional one-way conversions and moves to diagonal or perpendicular parking. It really, that depends a lot on the width of the improved portion of the right-of-way and the width of the sidewalks in the area, how easy that is, and exactly how much benefit you might achieve by it, but we could look at it. I will point out, though, that several of the commenters, justifiably, are concerned about parking in proximity to one particular building, Seventh and H, and obviously, taking the eighth and G lot out of the equation, there are still over 150 off-street city parking spaces within three blocks of that particular site. So, that's just one building in the area that, you know, could have some demand for this parking, but just to put it in context for council a little bit, there is other off-street parking, all-day-long off-street parking in the vicinity. But, if council wanted staff to look further at additional options for additional on-street capacity, we could do that.
So, I'm curious too, like, I know Eureka High now has a permit, so if there might be that option for people at the HCOA to do permitted parking on those areas? And when we brought this forward, there was only an 11% fill rate, so things have really changed. I mean, unfortunately, the communication wasn't there to hear that open door was going in at that time, but it is good to hear that there is those 150 parking places, and I would like to see if we do pass this today, that we're able to work with the business owners to mitigate that for them and make that, make that work for them. And with 150 spaces, do you feel like that is something that we'll be able to do?
Well, I, without looking at all of our utilization rate information, I would presume that there is sufficient excess capacity in those lots within a three-block radius to absorb the 30, how many spaces are in the eighth and G lot?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. I think that of that 150, we would often see a capacity of 42 empties in those lots.
Okay. So, we, if we were to move forward tonight, we could look at ideas like permit parking of the area, those types of things, so that folks do have and feel safe that they're going to have a space.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other, Councilmember Castellano?
Just kind of quick follow-up, some of the parking questions are already answered. Will it be possible to add additional parking spaces for disability access if we do, on the street, if we close that, if we remove the parking from the lot?
So, throughout the city, in several locations, we do allow individuals to request blue curbs in front of their businesses, and while that parking is restricted just to those that have appropriate placards or license plates, it's not technically accessible parking like what we have in our city lots. So, if we wanted to provide additional accessible parking on-street, there is the capability of doing that, but it's a little more complicated. It requires quite a bit of sidewalk alterations, and it's not something that's been done in Eureka yet, but it has been done elsewhere. Caltrans has a standard for it, so there is something to work from, and it could be done.
And then, maybe this would be a question for you also. I mean, this project, it would take a little while for it to take place, but I'm assuming that, would it be possible to refund people's smart meter cards if that proved necessary?
I'm sure it would be possible, but yes, there will be a lot of time that passes between now and certainly when a project hits the ground, and those cards can be used in any of our city lots. And, we're looking at revamping our parking meters anyway and moving to a different model because the smart cards have been problematic and that software is no longer supported.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Royall?
Could you speak to the, so, I work at Ninth and G, I work at RCIA when I'm not working here. And, so I'm very familiar with this lot, and it's current low utilization, although I recognize and acknowledge that people are using it per the comments today. I know that we also have a lot of employees in that area, and currently, none of them, to my knowledge, park in that lot. But also, just looking at the, kind of, the, knowing folks who work in the Harland Law Building and who park on the street there, and sort of, just there's, I just want to acknowledge that this lot is not in line of sight from the building. It's a block away, but like, you know, you have to turn, and so, at least, if there were something that were more adjacent, that we, that, you know, I was actually specifically wondering about the parking lot that's across from the Morris Graves. I believe that may be private property, but I don't currently know. That one is also never full. Any thoughts on that?
That is private property, and those spaces are leased out to private, you know...
People who never park there?
People, yeah, or, correct, yeah. I'm not sure exactly how many cars are often parked there, but it is a private lot.
Okay, so that one's off the table. I was just wondering if there's any other solutions that are actually more like immediate and obvious to people who would be going for, say, a medical appointment? I'm sure they could be directed to a parking lot that's nearly two blocks away, but I just am wondering if there's something that's more, on-street parking seems like the obvious choice, but I, you know...
People can lease those parking spaces in that lot?
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to undermine the concerns of people who thought that would be their parking. I don't want it to sound that way. I'm just kind of thinking about logistically, people's behavior around parking, often being that they're looking for immediately adjacent parking, so if we can create opportunities for blue curb parking, or, you know, on-street permit parking that is dedicated to regular employees of these locations, I'd be, I'd be interested in that. And, you know, I think this is a great opportunity to have centrally-located low-income housing on a fairly large lot that, in my view, is very minimally utilized from working right next to it every day. So, anyway, that said, it sounds like we kind of might want to have some more discussion around this topic, but I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution for the other two locations, for the Sunny and Myrtle site and the Sixth and M site.
I'll second. Okay, and I just want to make sure, Councilmember Mezner, you have any, I'll open it up for discussion, but I want to ask if you have any specifically.
Oh, I had just, I had sensed the same, that I was going to make the motion first. But I did want to mention with that, so I'll second that motion, that there's also the, there was a mention of the architectural design around it, and I know that that was something that we had worked on, being required, some certain things required for our buildings anyway, so I believe there's quite a bit within those requirements, within the city anyway, for new buildings, so hopefully that will be adequate enough without having to add the design review to it, or there may already be that as a part of it. So, just wanted to mention that, because I remember that that came up as well.
Thank you. And, Councilmember Mezner, I just want you to know that Councilmember Bergell had already seconded, so...
Oh, okay.
Don't we need two separate motions?
Well, we have, this is for the two...
But even with that, I think we need separate ones.
That's what I was trying to do, but I combined them, you're right. I, in my mind, it made sense. Okay, so the first motion pertains to APN 006181001, Sunny and Myrtle location.
Okay.
I'll second.
And then, the second, and then, do you want to do the second one too?
I think we have...
Oh, vote on it, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
We're out of practice here, y'all. We are so out of practice.
Roll call vote, please, because we have Councilmember Mezner on the phone, do you mind?
Sure. Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Royall?
Aye.
Councilmember Bergell?
Aye.
Councilmember Mezner?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison is absent for yes votes. Motion carries.
Okay.
Can I make another? Okay. I moved that we adopt a resolution for allowing development. I realized now that we forgot something, because we were supposed to weigh in on whether we are going to sell or lease these properties, no?
Yeah.
You don't need to make a motion for that. If you were really strongly about it, then you could, but right now, we just leave it as buy or lease in the RFP.
Okay, and they can propose what they wish to do?
Yes.
Okay, and that'll, okay, great. So, I propose that we send out an RFP related to the Sixth and M property, APNs 001233007 and 006.
All right, and Councilmember Mezner, do you want to second that one?
I'll second that one.
Okay. Do you have any discussion here? Councilmember Bergell?
So, I would have liked to make this discussion actually prior to the other one that we voted on, because I think it applies to all of them, but I really have a concern about the architectural look and the beauty of the buildings. What happens, and what has happened in the past in our city and has been problematic for me, is that we get these beautiful renderings of what this project is going to look like, and boy, it looks fabulous. It just looks fabulous. And then, when we're done, we end up with a, well, with a box oftentimes, and those architectural things aren't necessarily happening, and so I would like for us to have some more control over the look of our buildings. I think it's important, just because it's low housing, doesn't mean that it doesn't have to be nice. And we all are looking around in our city, and we're looking at these buildings, and frankly, many of them are not very beautiful to look at. And so, this has been something that's bothered me since I was new on council, and now is an opportunity for me to speak to it, and so I am, and that is why, another reason I would like to see us really look at sending out this RFP in a way that is taken up a notch, and really trying to attract people who want to not only make money on a project and get something done, and they, the motive probably is good, I mean, they do want to help people, but that's great, but we also need to have something that's going to beautify our city and for the long term. So, that for me is a priority in both, in both the bidding process and who bids on it and who we choose, and on the architectural design, because oftentimes with these buildings too, I think that they come in and there are change orders on them, because, you know, or they come in over budget, and so they have to leave off a few things, and that's problematic in my mind, so that's what I wanted to say about that.
So, Councilmember Castellano?
It's a really good question. I definitely agree with Councilmember Bergell's request, and at the last League of California Cities Policy Meeting for Housing, Community, and Economic Development, there was some talk of the relationship between concession, at the state level, mandates for concessions for affordable housing in terms of design, and that was a question I had at that meeting that I raised, and I don't feel like, it seems like there's, sometimes there's state-mandated policies where we have to make concessions around design if it's for affordable housing. And so, I'm just curious, like, how that might apply to these parcels, to what degree, or do we know?
I mean, I can take a shot at this at first, but Leslie, you're absolutely correct. The state is really hammering down on trying to get more affordable housing, so they really are limiting the city's municipality's ability to limit how it looks, because California is desperate for housing. But we do recognize the, I mean, that's why our general plan, it's fairly new, 2019, so I don't think we've gotten very many projects that follow all the new zoning code rules, so hopefully, our rules are enough.
All of what Senior Planner Castellano said is absolutely accurate. I will point out that the difference here compared to any other project that we've seen come through is that these are city-owned sites, and so, we have more say in what those projects look like and exactly what standards the people are held to. If a rendering comes in as part of a project, you know, at the outset, and what's ultimately constructed still complies with whatever design review approval there was at the time, but it's less than what was initially proposed, that might be okay. But if the council wants to say, no, we want these buildings to look of this quality because that's what was in the proposal, then because they're city-owned sites and this is a relationship between the city and that developer, then my position would be that we have more control over what ultimately happens there.
I would say, because this is where we live, and we want it to be beautiful, we don't want to have a bunch of box apartments all over town. That's my personal preference.
So, just as a question, does that change the order or the motion at all?
I'd just like to hear what Ms. Getz has.
So, in follow-up to Councilmember Castellano's comments and questions about concessions and incentives through the density bonus laws that are provided by the state of California, there are requirements in those laws that when developers request... there are requirements in those laws that when developers request concessions or incentives, that they have to prove to us that there is a financial reason that they need to have that incentive, that incentive or that concession granted to them. So it's possible that somebody would come in and say, I don't want to have to put balconies on my, my building. They need to prove to us that it's a financial burden for them to do that. So that helps a little bit.
And I, I believe that you, I suspect I know what developments may be coming to mind for folks, but I, I do believe that there were some approvals that took place prior to our current sort of, I, I, I'm not certain whether projects that are currently nearing completion were, like, met the old standards, but I see it related to architectural features and, like, long extensive, extensive use of blank walls and things like that, that now those are mitigated by our new municipal code and all of the requirements that we have around the way that buildings look. For me, it, it doesn't necessarily address the historically complimentary style, or, I mean, sometimes I think it can look hokey, to be honest, to make a building look fake Victorian. So I, I don't know how to kind of find that middle ground, but I would like to see it complement the neighborhood where, where there's a significant architectural kind of feature to the neighborhood. So, anyway.
Councilmember Messner has a comment? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Messner.
Yeah, I do think that it's really important, the design. It's why we spent, you know, quite a bit of time determining what those regulations would look like last year. And I appreciate Director Gervin letting us know that that does allow us the more control over what that, what the outcome is. So I really appreciate that. Thank you for reminding us of that, because it is a city-owned lot. And those regulations should be followed. That's why we put them in place. So it is a, a really important piece of what the council, and I believe many people within the community want to see, and especially when we're talking about, you know, lower-income housing, we want to make sure that people can be proud of where they live and, and want to live there. So, you know, no matter what level of income they have. So it's a really important piece of what we do when we are building these sorts of lots. And while we have these high demands from the state on housing mandates, and we are complying as greatly as we can with them, it is important also in making people, helping people feel that they have a home, that they actually are, are in. So that's an important piece of being in the home.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is that direction, does the direction need to be put in the motion, or is just, is that enough?
I, I mean, the motion I made was, was to, because I recognize that there are now additional standards for design that are in here for those sites, the Sunny and Myrtle and the Sixth and M sites. I think personally, these are sufficient. I understand that we'll receive proposals, and if they don't meet our criteria, we're not wedded to them, we would be selecting proposals. So to me, that meets that consideration for those sites. I still have numerous concerns about E and G, but that's not part of the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, and you're still good with your second. So are we ready to have a vote then? Okay. Please vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison is absent. Councilmember Bergell?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Allison absent. Motion carries.
All right. And so we do have the third site. Do we want to just? Do we have anything to do with Councilmember Bergell? Do you have?
So it seems to me that in listening to Director Gervin, that there are mitigations, that we can, can come up with something over time to mitigate the Humboldt Open Door and those types of things, whether that be the new person building, actually doing a parking lot below, whether we figure out permit parking, whether we figure out some way to do off-street parking with no fee, whatever that would look like. And it sounds like that this project isn't going to be happening tomorrow or even next ye, next week or in the next few months. So that would give us time to figure something out for you folks. So I feel, I feel fine about voting on it. I feel like we could certainly work together to come up with something that would support your needs as well as the housing need. That's my feel about it.
Was that your motion, or was that just your feeling? Okay. And Councilmember Castellano, then? Councilmember Arroyo?
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Bergell. I am personally interested in bonus points for, for artist space and/or childcare. A, a bonus point offering, I guess. I'm interested, I'm wondering if other councilmembers are interested in that.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I mean, I was going to comment on the, the fact that the RFP says that mixed use is encouraged, and the principally permitted uses include daycare and artisan space. I mean, it, it doesn't encourage it in the way that, that providing extra points would. I'm open to it. I just, it seemed like a potentially long list of things for which there would be extra points, so I'd like to, if possible, narrow it down. I, I'm still interested in my idea, which is to give extra points for something that's architecturally relevant to the area. But that said, I mean, I think, again, the, like, architectural details, there are, there are enough ways that people can meet those that would hopefully look nice in the area. It's just, it's kind of a gem of architecture right near there, that tourists stop by. Because I work in the turret of the Ninth and G building. I, I know, like, I see dozens and dozens and dozens of tourists every year stopping to take pictures from the building. So I know that that's a place that's, like, close to the highway that people stop to look at. That doesn't speak to your more significant concerns, which are about, you know, equitable resources for low-income folks, so.
And I know Councilmember Messner also has a comment.
Yeah, I, I think, is this one of the opportunity zone lots that we were discussing?
I believe it is. This is, this one's an opportunity zone.
Okay. So it seems to me that this would, would fit right in with some of those things that we've been talking about. And without, there are plenty of, we could mention those without making them requirements, but that the community would like to see some of those things. And there are a lot of companies that that's what they do. I've seen a number of them at various meetings around the state, that that's their focus, is actually building affordable housing that has playgrounds for children and community services in, within the building itself, and, you know, a number of those kinds of things. So it seems like there's leeway for a developer to do that, and choosing, choosing a developer would be where some of that would come in, some of those requests. Like, they wouldn't have to be required in the RFP, but suggested in the RFP.
Thanks, Heidi. Go ahead.
Is that doable?
Is that doable?
Director Gervin?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is an opportunity zone. I'd have to look it up.
Certainly, we can include additional elements that might be preferred in the RFP. The more specific requirements that we either require or give bonus points for, the more complex it's ultimately going to be to track the project after its completion as well. Something like a playground on the site, that's relatively easy. The likelihood of it going away is relatively low. But with these buildings, we're talking about requiring a specific number of deed-restricted affordable units. That has to be tracked over time. If there were bonus points awarded for artist space in, in one form or another, then that would somehow also have to be tracked over the life of the project, which I think from a staff standpoint would become too unwieldy to be practical. So that would be my concern about things that are not physical elements of the project being awarded bonus points, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense. Okay, well, I, I'll go ahead and adopt a resolution in City Council of the City of Eureka, authorizing the reduction of removal parking, of public parking for, to facilitate development of affordable housing projects for site number APN 001-115-500, with the consideration for the compliance, like, the ADA compliance spaces and some of these other spaces, just making sure that we can help long-term parking occur somewhere else.
So Councilmember Messner, can we just get you to, to name the right parcel number, which I believe is yours?
She had it right. We're at the Eighth and G site, the middle one.
Yeah, I know. She said 500 and 115. So there's one.
Oh, is that the wrong number?
No, you just, you just mixed up some numbers. At Eighth and G sites, as long as we clarify that that's it.
The Eighth and G site.
And then, I'm looking for a second, but I know Councilmember Castellano also has a comment.
Okay. I have comments as well, but, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I won't, I will not vote for this, but I, but I do think that it's not that hard to track artist housing, I mean, just by how it's advertised or whatever. So, and, and I do feel like if that is something that we want in our city and we want in our downtown area, that we have to prioritize it at some point, or at least make it, encourage people to build it. And, I mean, I, I don't think that, I think putting it into the point system is better encouragement than just saying, we hope you do this. So I would like to see that, see us consider that on a future site as it comes forward.
I'm, I'm open to, like, a set, like, an additional number of points for something flexible, like artist housing, or, like, providing additional childcare services, or, like, something else to benefit families that live there, like, allowing the proposers to come up with something that would be, would, would improve the quality of life of people. Specifically with artist housing, though, if it's not a live-work space, like, spaces that are designed for live-work, it's, like, clear that an artist is going to live there, most likely. But I don't know, like, how are we going to know they're artists? Are they going to have an artist card? Like, are they going to show art? Like, I, I just don't know how we would.
I mean, and I think, in my mind, there would be some sort of accompanying gallery or workspace or shared workspace or something like that. And again, maybe this site is not the site to be like, let's figure it out right now. But I do think that, and, and yeah, and I'm open to it being a selection of things, like, you know. So, yeah, I, I just, and I, and I believe we did talk about this at some point in, in the housing element. So just, I'm just going to keep pursuing it.
I just have a legal question about that. So I know that when we did the lodge, there was, it was discriminatory to not, well, it was discriminatory not to allow, or to keep other people from, out of the area from moving in. So in other words, if my grandma wanted to move to Eureka from wherever, she could, even though we have, you know, 100 people living down on, you know, whatever street it is. We, we can't just regulate just a specific population. So how, how would you do that legally? Would you have to have the complete thing be artist living? Or would you, I mean, is there, is there a way to do that legally with, where it's not discriminatory?
I don't know. I think it would be difficult to just designate artists as the only people that would be eligible for units, you know, one through five or something like that. I think you could, I think you, if you tied it to a live-work situation, and you gave bonus points for a proposer who would, you know, like, one bonus point for each live-work space that was brought forward, you know, you might have to let some computer workers, you know, that work at home, occupy those as well. But certainly, you could create an opportunity for artists that wouldn't exist elsewhere. But to just say, only artists can occupy these units, I, I see that as problematic, for a variety of reasons.
And is that what you were asking? Or were you asking something different?
I think what City Attorney Black said would satisfy my, my desires. I am curious, though, like, how, I mean, there, there is artist housing, you know, like, throughout the state of California. I mean, like, Seattle has a whole program of city-paid-for artist housing that has done phenomenal work in revitalizing the downtown down there. You know, so, so I know it's possible to create, you know, housing that's mandated for artists. But again, like, I think we can look into it and maybe keep it in mind for a future project.
Yeah, I think I would like to have more information.
I think, I think what Councilmember Castellano said is probably the best option for now, which is look into it, just in the sense that it bears, I think it would benefit from some research. And we could think about, if we're going to be coming back with three or four properties each year for several ensuing years, there would be opportunities, if we figure out how to do it, there would be opportunities to do it, you know, repeatedly, so.
And I'm, I'm glad you're bringing it up now. So even if we don't do it now, we know before the next one to start thinking about it, you know, before we get up here to the dais. So Councilmember Arroyo?
So back to the parking. I know we, we really, it's, it's always difficult when we are thinking of development of a place where people park. And our general plan is pretty aggressive about prioritizing other uses than parking. And so I realize it's, it's frustrating and it's a change, and, and I don't know how we're going to meet our housing requirements if we don't seriously consider all of these parking lots that the city owns as potential housing locations. Like, there's, the city really doesn't own a lot of property that's not developed. And so I, I, we're sort of between a rock and a hard place on this one. It, I would like to ask if staff could see any, like, it, it honestly, this area of town drives me nuts because I work there, I spend time there, and there are so many privately-owned parking lots that are almost empty. And I realize they're privately owned, and they are, they're probably more expensive, but it doesn't seem like they're being utilized. And so I wonder if people are just not renting those spaces because the cost is too high. I don't know, but I'd be interested in seeing if our Economic Development Department could, I know we've talked for a long time about a more comprehensive kind of parking plan, but I, I wonder if that could include something like speaking with private parking lot owners about either the opportunity to develop their property to help meet city housing standards, so that we can keep more city parking lots for parking, or the other way around, where they're willing to perhaps be flexible in their rates for a lot of the neighboring businesses, or if there's some outreach we can do, because there's, like, four cars parked at all of them. And even some of the developments that we have sanctioned, like the lodge at Eureka, I mean, I realize at the time that it was constructed, it had different parking requirements. Has a giant parking lot now. Can we, can we renege on that and try to get something else built there? I'd just love to see us revisit this more comprehensive effort to address parking and utilization of parking because it is really frustrating and wasteful, and we're in a place where we absolutely have to develop housing. That's my speech. Anyway, I, I know it's not something that pleases everyone in the room, but I, I'm, I'm supportive of this project and willing to move forward.
All right. Did we have a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay, and we had a second. Are we all ready to vote? Okay. I was getting them all confused.
All right. Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison is absent. Councilmember Bergell?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Allison absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. What time is it? It is 7:53. Does everybody want to take a quick break and come right back to the next one? Or do we want to do the fees? We can do the fee schedule quick. Or do we wanna do the fees, we can do the fee schedule quick, and then we'll do the break? Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of discussion on the fee schedule, but I don't know. A two. 2020 fee schedule I might have. So, do we have a presentation on that? No? All right, does anybody have any questions for Director Millar about the fee schedule? All right. Seeing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anybody here to make a comment at the public hearing about the fee schedules? No phone calls? About it? I didn't think so. Then I will bring it back for comments or motion. Okay, Councilmember Burghel?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution.
Do you need to close the public hearing first? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to close, the public hearing's now closed. Thank you.
So, I make the motion to adopt the attached resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka, establishing various fees and service charges within the City of Eureka.
I'll second, I also have a comment.
All right, discussion.
I just wanted to recognize that a lot of our fees stayed the same, or even in some cases went down, for use of like community resources, and so I wanted to thank our staff for looking at ways to make that possible, including like getting a lacquer at the Adorni Center, or, you know, renting out the Sequoia Park gazebo for birthday parties, stayed the same. So, I wanted to thank staff for, even though it's a difficult budget year, for thinking about our community members and their, you know, family events and things like that in making the fee schedule.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All right, unless, we can have a vote.
All right. Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Burghel?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Allison is absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now that we're through that part of the, the meeting, we will take a quick break, and we'll come back to item B. Back everybody to the next, to the next part of our meeting, which is item B, the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar today? I didn't hear of any. All right, can I have a motion to approve it?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right. Then, let's have a vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Burghel?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Allison is absent, motion carries.
All right. Now we are gonna move on to item D1, which is non-motorized transportation planning, and I would like... Are you gonna invite, or introduce Jesse?
What I'm gonna do this evening is just provide a little bit of background on the video that you're going to see. Your staff, led by City Engineer Willer, put together this video regarding sort of the status of non-motorized transportation planning in Eureka. City Engineer Willer led that team, as I mentioned, was assisted heavily by the Deputy City Engineer, David Case, and our Transportation Special Projects Manager, Scott Elsmore, as well as other members of the engineering team. In the video, Jesse updates us on the status of some projects and the status of several planning efforts related to non-motorized transportation. It's not a very deep dive on any particular one, but it does give some good background, and, like I said, the status of each of them. If you could, please think of questions as we go, and if you'd like to discuss any project at the end, we can absolutely do that. We can also bring projects back for more detail at future meetings, if you would like it. And I, I would ask that you pay special attention to some of the opportunities to expand the non-motorized transportation network. Some of them would be really great ways to connect various areas of the city that lack that connectivity currently, but as with any new infrastructure in developed areas, they come with some trade-offs, and we should hold no illusion they'd be without controversy. So, we just need to keep that in mind as we're talking about them, and, and your staff would like some feedback as to, you know, which of them you think would be viable for us to pursue. So, with that, we'll start the video, and then both City Engineer Willer and I will be available to answer questions at the end, and get your popcorn, it is about 22 minutes, but there's good content there.
Good evening. I'm Jesse Willer, the City Engineer, and tonight we are here to talk some non-motorized transportation in the City of Eureka. Before we jump into our topic tonight, I would like to acknowledge those who assisted in preparing this presentation, Special Project Manager Scott Elsmore and Deputy City Engineer David Case. David has been working on the C Street concept and put together some fun animations that I will show later. He is also active in many of the topics discussed later. Scott plays an integral role in all of our transportation-related projects and involved in nearly all efforts we discuss tonight. Thank you, David and Scott. Tonight, I will run through two areas of non-motorized transportation. One, general planning efforts, and two, project updates. For the most part, this presentation will focus on bicycle facilities and trails for the sake of time. The location of transportation facilities in a city are typically driven by natural topography and historical development. In Eureka, we have a dynamic landscape, coastlines on two sides, and gulches and greenways interlaced throughout. As a more or less built-out city, very little open space or corridors exist, limiting the opportunities to locate facilities. Here's an overview of Eureka. As we can see, on the west and the north, we're surrounded by Humboldt Bay, we have gulches to the northeast, and in the south, we have Martin Slough. The center of the city, the majority of the city, you can see is a built-out, gridded network, and this, these are, these are a lot of the challenges, as well as opportunities that we, we face in Eureka. With the geographic and physical constraints in mind that we just discussed, we begin to look for and add potential opportunities to maps. We think to ourselves, "Where do people need or want to go?" Do they wanna go to Old Town, Downtown, Henderson Center, Waterfront Trail? They wanna get to medical facilities, or to shopping? Identify likely routes to get between those destinations. For bicycles, we look at streets that connect destinations but allow for opportunities for low-traffic stress, where bicycle facilities will also fit. Potential routes are reviewed to determine if adequate rideaway was available to fit bike facilities. An example of some connections and destinations, the McKay Community Forest in the Cutten area. The county has multiple maps, and here we see an access point map. Here is a non-motorized facility map. We look at these maps, and we think to ourselves, "How can facilities in, in the City of Eureka connect with destinations such as this to get people out and utilizing those wonderful natural trail systems that are coming our way?" We take these ideas and concepts, put them down on paper, and create preliminary non-motorized transportation maps. These maps help us see all the different facilities laid out together, be it bike lanes or trails, potential opportunities for bicycle boulevards. You see the entire non-motorized transportation network, and look for those opportunities to create efficiencies and to get people to destinations that they wanna go safely. If we zoom in a little bit on the map here, we see existing facilities such as the Eureka Waterfront Trail that slides along the west and north of the city. You see proposed trail, like the Beta Zoo, coming along the, the east side of the city limits here. You see the H&amp;I Street corridor, you see potential opportunities for bike lanes, bike boulevards. Everything is out here, whether it's a proposed or existing facility, and then with these connections in mind, the network starts to become more clear. We dig in a little deeper and a little closer, we can see the Cooper Gulch and Ross Park area here, we see connection to existing and future facilities such as H&amp;I Street corridor or bike lanes on Sixth and Seventh. We see future potential for Beta Zoo over here on the east side, connections to Myrtle Town through this area here. We, we throw everything out on the table to determine something that might work for us. One concept that has been around for a while, as far as north-south routes go, is the C Street Bike Boulevard. We thought we'd use this concept to further develop how bicycle boulevard might look in Eureka. C Street has destinations to the north with Old Town Waterfront Trail, to the south with Henderson Center, as well as destinations in between, such as St. Bernard School and Jefferson, Jefferson Community Center. What is a bike boulevard? The NACTO Urban Design Bike Way Design Guide defines a bicycle boulevard as "streets with low-motorized traffic volumes and speeds designated and designed to give bicycle travel priority." Bicycle boulevards use signs, pavement markings, and speed and volume management measures to discourage through trips by motor vehicles and create safe, convenient bicycle crossing of busy arterial streets. The Urban Bike Design Guide also provides a list of design elements that can be grouped and tailored to existing conditions to see, achieve the desired outcome of a bicycle boulevard. Here we see a few, like route planning to direct access to destinations, signage and pavement markings that are easy to find and follow, there's ways to manage speed to create slow motor vehicle speeds, there's also elements that reduce motor vehicle volumes on those streets. There's crossings of minor streets with minimal, minimal bicycle delay, elements that make crossing major streets safe and convenient. Here is the C Street Bike Boulevard concept. It is a north-south route. In the north, we see it starts at First Street, the intersection with the Waterfront Trail and with the boardwalk, and heads south through Old Town, and then from that point, as it leaves Old Town, we see a number of intersections before it gets to Harris, where the control of those intersections has been changed in order to discourage traffic from entering C Street. The first one is at Seventh Street, where there's a one-way segment for one block, then at Fourteenth Street, we see one-way segments both to the north and to the south, and then again, at Boone, we see two one-way sections included there, and then finally, at Harris Street, a single one-way section. Let's jump in at Seventh Street and see how that intersection looks. Here we see the, the built-out intersection, we have bulbouts on all four corners of the intersection, there's two-way C Street on the left, and one-way C Street on the right for vehicles, and two-way traffic for bicycles on Street, C Street on the left. So, let's see how this might function through an animation. Bicycles approach from the west and east with a vehicle, they pull up to the bike box and wait. That triggers flashing beacons, vehicles on Seventh Street come to a stop, and the bicycles safely cross the intersection, and vehicles continue on their way. This configuration allows to reduce traffic volumes on Seventh Street as vehicles coming on Seventh are, are no longer able to make a right turn onto Seventh. Let's look at our next section, which is an offset intersection, which there are a couple of these on C Street. Here we see the intersection with Simpson and Hillsdale. Median Islands have been shown here in this concept in the middle. This will reduce the potential for traffic trying to cross from Hillsdale to Simpson, creating unsafe conditions. It'll also reduce turning movements from these streets, from Simpson taking a left onto C, and from Hillsdale taking a right onto C. So, that reduces, again, volumes coming into this particular area, and it makes it safer for bicycles to navigate these offset intersections, which can be dangerous. Next, we'll look... And here we have the intersection of C Street and Fourteenth. At this intersection, in existing condition, there's two-way traffic on C Street that is stop-controlled at the intersection. Fourteenth Street does not have any control on it, so vehicles would pass through here without any stopping. In the proposed condition, what we see is two-way bike traffic on C Street and one-way traffic on C Street. So, one way, so that vehicles on Fourteenth would not be able to turn onto C Street northbound or southbound. This will help reduce volumes on C Street and keep the level of traffic stress on those streets low for bicycles. Well, let's take a look at how this intersection operates. So, we see here, we have bicycles approaching from the north and the south, they enter the bike boxes, the flashing beacons on Fourteenth begin to fire, alerting vehicular traffic that there is bikes ready to cross. Once the bicycles see that they have a clear path to cross, they do so, and they cross over into their lanes, vehicles make their movements off of C Street, and that's how it works. Next, let's look at the far south end of the corridor at Harris Street. Here, at the intersection of C Street and Harris, we have turned C Street from a two-way directional north-south route to a one-way southbound route. This allows for reduction of vehicles entering to C Street from Harris. Let's take a look at how it works. We have a bicycle approach from the west, enters into the bike box, they make their turning movement across Harris Street and onto C Street when it's safe for them to do so. One topic that we wanted to present to council was the concept of phasing the, some of the improvements along C Street. Many of these improvements include hardscapes such as curbs and median islands, and can be quite expensive. These particular types of installations also are difficult to have funded by grant projects. So, we've looked at opportunities perhaps to be able to phase the projects in such a way that we maintain a high level of safety while also being able to have the project implemented more rapidly. So, here, let's take this as an example, Simpson Street and Hillsdale intersection with C Street. The, the proposal that we have here shows median islands splitting traffic apart in order to keep vehicles from being able to make left and right-hand turns out onto C Street. We also eliminate the cut-through from Simpson to Hillsdale or from Hillsdale to Simpson. So, one way that we could implement this in a bike boulevard but be more cost-effective would be to do the following. Here we see just some simple striping and pavement markings on C Street that would allow vehicles traveling on here to, to understand that this is actually a bicycle boulevard. In this case, parking would not be impacted, vehicle turning movements from Hillsdale and Simpson would not be restricted, but this would also be a way to get a bicycle boulevard started, or phased in the first phase, and get the ball moving ahead as far as this project's concerned. Here is another example of how a project, how a project for C Street might be phased in order to allow for the project to be implemented in a more rapid fashion. Here's the full build-out that has the concrete, bulbouts that are shortened in the crossings distance, you know, very expensive type of infrastructure. Here, we see what that intersection might look like without those hardscape extensions for the bulbouts. Basically striped bulbouts in order to try to slow traffic and provide a safer crossing for pedestrians, and still allow for the one-way nature on C Street, and to allow for bikes to have a good, clear path of travel through the intersection. and to allow for bikes to have a good, clear path of travel through the intersection. In South Eureka, we see a couple of opportunities to expand the trail network. In one location, a right-of-way exists between the end of California Street down to the municipal golf course. Additionally, there's an opportunity based on the topography of Martin Slough to extend a trail from Sequoia Park down along that watershed to the municipal golf course as well. From the municipal golf course, a trail could extend continuing along Martin Slough and wrap back around to Elk River Road and eventually connect to the Hicksari Trail on the other side of 101. This would, in concept, create potential south routes down to Southern Eureka and also create a looped system linked together with the Beta Zoo Trail through this network to the Waterfront Trail, creating a looped system in the city. So that concludes the non-motorized planning portion of our presentation. We really look forward to getting some feedback from council on the direction staff is going in pursuing non-motorized planning in the city. And please wait until the end of the presentation to provide any comments or discussion. Now we'll enter into the second portion of our presentation and discuss projects. The city continues to work on many fronts to address non-motorized transportation needs. Let's discuss the projects now. Those projects include the Beta Zoo Trail, HNI Non-Motorized Corridor Improvements, Waterfront Drive G to J, the Elk River Title March Enhancement, Elk River Spit Portion, and the Broadway Multimodal Corridor Plan. All right, let's start it off with the Beta Zoo Trail. So this project is currently in the environmental study phase. So we are conducting environmental studies on parcels that would potentially have the trail crossing them. So staff has reached out to property owners and coordinated access agreements in order to get our consultants onto their parcels to do the study. And to note, while we've contacted landowners that the trail may cross, other neighbors may still have reservations about the trail in their neighborhood. And we will continue to look at opportunities to reach out to the community and make sure that everybody is understanding what the trail is, though they may not agree with it. So the next phase of work to be done on the project is to try to secure funding to move the project ahead. The Active Transportation Program, ATP, is currently open for projects. So we will be putting together an application or have been putting together an application that'll be due on September 15th. So we'll be looking forward to that. The next project on our list is the HNI Corridor Improvements. This project is currently in design development with a grant application being pulled together for submittal on September 4th of this year. You are probably familiar with this project. It is the alternative that was selected by council that came out of the north-south multimodal corridor planning efforts. The project includes a buffered bike lane on HNI Street and taking those streets to two lanes with the buffered bike facility. It includes intersection improvements and safety enhancements at the intersections along the corridor. And we'll be pushing this one ahead in the coming months. The next project on our list is the Waterfront Drive G to J. This project is currently in construction and they are adding in the final touches on the streetlights and looking to close the gap between the bike lanes on Waterfront Drive and the boardwalk behind the Aquatic Center. This project will, once it's connected to the boardwalk, will be that final link between the existing boardwalk and the pathway behind the Aquatic Center heading to the east. Our next project is the Elk River Title March Enhancement and the Elk River Spit Trail. This project is currently in design development and is looking to go to construction in the summer of 2021. The portion that we want to make note of tonight is the trail portion. This trail would connect the Hicksari Trail at Pound Road and tie into a trailhead parking lot near Tubey Road adjacent to Humboldt Hill. This will provide a key access or key extension to the south that may continue the potential for a trail system, a trail network to continue south, paralleling the NCRA right-of-way to College of the Redwoods, Fortuna, Riodell, and south to the future great Redwood Trail along the Eel River. Very exciting and be an excellent opportunity for folks to be able to get on the trail and access some very beautiful and distinct coastal setting along the bay. The final project we'll review tonight is the Broadway Multimodal Corridor Planning Efforts. This project covers the Broadway Corridor from Herrick in the south all the way to Fourth and Fifth Streets in the north. It's a regional planning effort between HCOG, Caltrans, and the City of Eureka. Currently, we're in alternate, alternative development, trying to determine what are the best alternatives to move forward based on the data that's been gathered to this point. We'll be moving into stakeholder group meetings in the coming weeks here. On July 16th, we have two that are set up. During that, we'll be kind of looking at some of the assessments that's going on with the alternatives. The assessments look like this. This is an example of one of the assessments. It's not quite complete yet, but just to give everyone an idea of what this looks like. This is the Costa Couplet, which is an idea that Caltrans is pushing, was pushing ahead on and that has been incorporated into this particular planning effort as far as an alternative. You'll see on the left, there's an overview with some discussion of the pros and cons of the corridor. There's an assessment with some metrics that are scored there as far as how the alternative functions. On the right-hand side, we see cross-sections and plan view examples of the corridor through the different stretches along the alignment. So this project is moving ahead and is looking to be completed, the planning effort, in the fall. So be prepared for some more community engagement and bringing this back to council in the near future. That concludes the presentation for this evening. Now we'll open it up for discussion and feedback from council. We are looking forward to getting some feedback on whether or not we're going in the right direction with analyzing and planning for non-motorized transportation in the City of Eureka. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my second time enjoying that film. Do you may have any questions? For Councilmember Bergell.
On the Bike Boulevards, there, on the bullbouts, there won't be truncated domes on those, will there? You know, the bumpy, noisy?
Yes, there will be truncated domes. Those are required for crossings of, when you have a crossing of a street like that, you have to have those domes at the edge of the pathway between the sidewalk and the roadway.
But they're not as noisy as a rumble strip or something?
No, they should just be pedestrians on the, on the bullbouts themselves. So coming off the sidewalk into the street versus, so there shouldn't be any car traffic really going over them unless a car. No, the bikes would be out in the roadway in the striped bike lanes. Thanks.
Did you have something, Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah. I wasn't sure when I was watching the, the analysis of C Street if that was a hypothetical project, so we could kind of see how things work or if that's a project that's in the works. Because then it didn't appear later on the projects list. So I guess, I guess I'm trying to know how I should be thinking about it first.
Yeah, I think we decided to use C Street because it's been, there's been discussion about that particular street becoming a Bike Boulevard or a Bike, Bike and Ped Facility more so than other streets. So we thought it was just, you know, let's use that as an example. It has, it kind of meets those requirements that they have as far as what you're looking for in a Bike Boulevard. You know, connection points, ability to restrict volumes on the street. So we thought that was a good candidate to use as an example, not necessarily as a pilot project, but as an example of what a Bike Boulevard could look like in the City of Eureka. And so that's why we developed a concept to go along with C Street. Now, it's not to say that, you know, if you wanted to, that that couldn't be moved forward and used as a, you know, turned into a project. We've kind of developed those concepts, thinking that we could easily take those concepts and turn them into a design. And, you know, we started doing some preliminary cost estimating, which, you know, is important for, you know, planning efforts like this.
And kind of relatedly, would it make sense to prioritize some of the projects that have already, you know, been in development and then like come back to C Street later? Or would, or does it kind of just like, put a lot of projects out there and then apply for funding as it becomes available for different types of things?
We would welcome feedback on priorities, of course. In this case, yeah, we don't have a priority set for that particular project.
Well, I like all of these ideas. Oh, gosh, I'm stuck on my, stuck in my mask. Wait a minute. Just trying to adjust it. So I like all of these ideas. I live on C Street. I don't know if that makes it any conflict for me. I would love for people to go slower on C Street and for it to feel safer biking. And I, I'd be interested in seeing that move forward. And I like the idea of the interim options. And I know there are also issues with at the, where Delmar comes in and then Hawthorne. It's a similar place where people just go straight. They just fly through. There are certainly stop signs. But I don't know if that's another alternative location to add additional striping or reminders that there might be other users of the roadway coming through also. Anyway, I like, I like all the ideas presented. I'm not sure there are any that I would, like obviously ones that have current funding in progress and are good candidates for additional funding for implementation. I'd like to see us focus energy on, but it looks like that's already happening. The only question this generated for me was about, I thought in, I admit that I didn't watch the entirety of the video because I wanted to be surprised by some of it. So we did get this in advance. I watched about half of it. And so I didn't get to the projects part. And I thought that the project in Henderson Center might be included. So I was wondering if you could speak to that project and kind of where it fits in. And I realize it's not only for non-motorized users, but it is certainly helpful for them.
Right, we didn't, yeah, and we didn't capture everything, all the projects that we have out there. But that one is definitely still, you know, moving ahead. It's the pedestrian improvement project that encapsulates down there with the HCP funding. So I think they're working on, you know, moving that project ahead very quickly. So I don't have, I honestly can't tell you exactly what phase we're in right now off the top of my head, but it's, it's definitely a priority project.
Is there still opportunity for public input on the design or what will that look like? Is it already settled?
I am not sure about that. And so I'll have to, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, if there's an opportunity to do public input that I could help with, I would love to.
Yeah, and the reason, yes, I'll take that. I just, I know that we have multiple grant efforts going on right now. And I can't remember exactly where that one's at in those efforts and where, what process we're in with that particular one. I know it's definitely one of the ones that's further ahead than others, so. Not sure if that opportunity is there, but I'll let you know if it is.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, do I have any issues with living on C Street and weighing in on a C Street project? Perhaps where it's several blocks away from my home?
What did you say about several blocks away?
Just, I, I mean, the portion that's in front of my home, I don't have any comment about. But the portions that are a little further away where I see potential traffic issues, I guess I have some concerns about.
Well, I think the whole intent of the, the intersection configurations and such is to reduce traffic and the speed of traffic overall. So, but on the other hand, although you live on that street, the project itself affects the whole community or a much, much wider community than just yours. So that's, I would have to analyze that. I'd have to look harder at the law. Some of those rules have changed somewhat over the past few years. So we take a look at it before any action, action item comes about.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I, I'm fully supportive of these and I know how controversial they can be. No one can, nothing can be as controversial as a trail. Like, who knew? We all got on council that some of the worst, most vehement feedback would be about trails. So I know that this, these plans could ruffle some feathers, but I think in the long-term view of the city and consistent with our general plan, they really make sense.
Councilmember Bergell? So I too wanted to say that I really liked all the projects. I really liked the HNI project a lot. I know that we got a lot of interesting feedback on that the last time that it came forward, but I'd like to see us pursue that. And then I would also like to see us pursuing the Bike Boulevard. I know that that's been a talk of conversation since, I mean, it's been a long time because I was on Transportation Safety Commission when we first started. Probably it was talked about before then, but we started talking about it at that point and what that would look like. So we don't have anything like that and it would also move us into the next level of, from silver to gold, I think, in the bike, you know, the little, what is it, the California Bike Plan thing? You know what I'm talking about? Because we did become silver, now we could become a gold if we had a Bike Boulevard. It's just kind of cool, so.
I'll note that.
So Councilmember Messner, did you have anything?
I just, you know, I really appreciate staff's work on this. I know it's taken a number of years and there are, there's so much involved in really mapping out the city in this way. But trails are known to provide a greater, not only health in the community, but desirable living in a community as well. And as we saw happen with the Waterfront Trail, which also had some pushback, we, we've just seen such an amazing ability to, that was just, it changed the whole look and the whole desirability of that area. So, you know, I'm excited about the things that you guys are, have been proposed. And I, I wish we could just drop it all in, you know, make it happen. But I know there's a process for doing all of it. And I too, I am thankful that Councilmember Oreo asked a question about Henderson Center too because that was one of my questions about what was happening with that area as well. So thank you for clarifying where that fits in. So maybe I was a little confused on if you wanted, what you wanted from us. Is there something you're specifically asking from us tonight? Or more that it was a presentation on what you guys were doing?
No, I really, thank you, Heidi. I've really appreciated the feedback on the Bicycle Boulevard. I think that's helpful to know where council, you know, what you feel about that particular project and maybe that type of concept in other locations in the city. Because when we put those preliminary maps together, we start looking at, well, where could we put a facility like that? And, you know, because that's one way that you encourage people to be out on the street and bike safely. So it's, if this is a type of situation where you see that's, that concept is something that, you know, you like and want to see more of, then we could, you know, see moving that into, into other locations and start to propose some, you know, other, other areas. And that's what we've kind of started to put into our, our mapping. And they're very preliminary, they're just ideas at this point. But that's kind of the feedback that we're looking for as far as the Bike Boulevards. And then for me, some of the areas in Southern Eureka that we talked about, where we found a, it's in the county, but there's a street right-of-way for California Street that extends down to the municipal golf course. And that's, that area could be a good location for a trail. It's a green, it's a green belt. It's public-owned right-of-way, it's county right-of-way, but the county in the past has been open to discussions about using that for other, for, for something. So. So that would be, I'd be curious about that and, you know, extending the network a little bit.
I just think, I know that it actually typically across the country, you know, raises housing costs and desirability for a community. It actually improves that. So it is definitely desirable.
I know you want to, can I say something? The multimodal corridor for Caltrans, they're going to be doing focus groups again. So we just did a bunch a few months ago. Are these kind of a further along group of focus groups or are they the same questions?
Yeah, good question. No, this will be, this will be the kind of the next step with the focus groups, which is looking at alternatives that have been developed that will kind of, I guess it'll be just that, more or less talking about the alternatives and the pros and cons of them. So that assessment sheet I showed up there is just one example of a handful of alternatives that are out there, some of which have been around for a while and some of which are new. So that'll be an introduction to get some feedback from the stakeholder groups. After that, we'll take that feedback and we'll start to incorporate that to narrow down the list and modify those alternatives to come back to another community-wide meeting where we'll get additional feedback from the community on those alternatives. And then from there, try to put together another suite of alternatives, potentially bring back here to council for some feedback from, from council.
And we were given a stack, a stack of cards to share with people to still provide, to provide input at their website. Is that still active?
Yep, yeah, so we've, our most recent efforts, we did a business survey through the chamber and we received, for exact numbers, some 150 responses back to that survey. So we got some really good feedback from that survey as far as what business owners in the corridor thought about the, the concepts that were introduced to them. So we're, and that is interactive, so people can still feed, you know, feedback, give feedback through that and they can also give feedback through the website.
I just want to make sure I'm still sending, because I, every once in a while I'll talk to somebody and I'll say, oh, there's this great thing, I don't know if it's still up, so.
Yep, it is.
The other thing I wanted to say is that I have received over a dozen letters from Seventh Street residents. They're on a, they're having a campaign to try to help us see how frustrating they are, frustrated they are with the speed. So I would be very excited about having anything on Seventh Street that would cause people to slow down. I think it's probably further away from those homes, but. So Seventh Street is looking for some love in a big way. And then I'm very excited about the Southern stuff down at the slough. So if you're looking, I think that was, of all the projects you talked about, maybe I like the idea of closing the loop. I love the idea of being able to get to Humboldt Hill. If you're a high schooler on Humboldt Hill and you don't drive, you're stuck. It's a huge deal for them to be able to access. I know their county, but we love them too. So, okay, now Councilmember Orio.
Yeah, just in keeping with what you were saying about California Street and the possibility for an extension. I mean, I wondered also about the viability of California as an additional bike boulevard when it's going through town or in addition to or an alternative to C Street. I know that it has a lot of the same benefits as far as not having as many crossings and stop signs. Perhaps there's more and there's certainly like the Senior Resource Center and other facilities that could benefit from, from some slowed traffic, but also potentially those improvements.
Yeah, I think you touched on a couple of the challenges of looking at these, at the different streets. You know, where do you find those options where you have less stops on, that also have already low traffic volumes? So you're not really trying to, you know, inhibit a route that might be used pretty well already. And then right-of-way is a big part of it. Can, what can you fit on there if you're doing a bike boulevard? Well, you kind of have the middle of the roadway, you know, you have a lot more open because you're sharing the road, which is, which is a great option, but there's still some constraints that come along with the right-of-way. So that's a lot of what we're trying to balance out with looking at the maps, is trying to find kind of the sweet spot for those roads. And it's, it's a bit of an iterative process to try to really dial in on, on a good option. California could be a good one. I know the Southern section before it goes down into the green belt there is, it's pretty tight. The right-of-way is pretty narrow. So those are things we'd take a look at, definitely an option.
Councilmember Castellano? She's just giving me stare eyes, didn't she?
Yes. Let's see, I'm also excited about C Street. My only, I think, question or concern is if it would push traffic going faster onto B Street or how we might address that, just because I know Jefferson Community Center is there. And so it's not not to go forward on C Street. It's just to hopefully, you know, work with how that might affect cars on B Street, I guess. And then I really like the idea of these big loops going around the city. What came to mind also, what Councilmember Messner brought up is, is I feel like that kind of infrastructure is what, you know, when people are looking to move here or things like that. I think those kinds of things are really exciting and exciting for people who live here to be able to travel about in, in different ways. And, you know, I believe I've talked with you about this in the past, but I am supporter, supportive of the Broadway multimodal corridor. If my concerns about sea level rise and mitigations for that, you know, and wetlands are addressed, then I feel fine going forward. But, you know, until that is, you know, until I see that, it's hard for me to feel, you know, know, how supportive I can be of the project, you know? And I know that's a conversation that's still in development, but I just feel like I'll keep saying it, you know, until those questions are answered. But, you know, I definitely, in terms of the bike transportation part of it, I'm highly supportive of that aspect for sure.
Councilmember Bregal? Point of clarification, bike-friendly city, state of California. That's what our silver, we're silver. We could be gold.
Shooting for gold.
So this is a report, but is there anybody out there in the audience who has something they want to add to the conversation? All right, I just figured it was a good conversation, a good opportunity to hear from folks. All right, there's, we're just receiving the report today. We gave you some direction. Do you feel like you got what you needed?
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This is really exciting stuff. You're right, it does get people, it's a big change, so it makes people feel all the feels. But some of us feel really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now we get to move on to city manager reports. And Mr., welcome to your first meeting as interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, our housing coordinator, Kristin Raymond, is going to be giving a report on the COVID-19 Housing Assistance Funds that the council approved at a previous council meeting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members, also the, the city manager, attorney and Pam. So yes, as Mel was saying, towards the end of April, we approved the COVID-19 Assistance Fund Program in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the city of Eureka created this program to assist, one, service providers and second, individuals and families with a couple different options. So for the service providers, we assisted them with a grant to provide assistance with, for them to assist them with funding their utility bills. And we allowed them to receive up to, sorry, $5,000, a maximum of $5,000 with a, with no limit on the maximum month that they could apply for. And then with the individuals and families, we allowed them a maximum grant of $2,500 with a maximum monthly amount of two months of assistance. So the, currently, the grants to homeless shelter providers, we've had funding, we funded one, one service provider for the last three months at $5,000. And with this assistance, the homeless shelter provider was able to assist 450 to 500 individuals per month. And originally, the city approved $50,000 to assist service providers. We currently have used $15,000 and we currently have $35,000 still in that fund. The grants to individual and families, we have assisted 25 families, which is made up of 64 individuals of men, women and children. And originally, the city had approved $200,000. We have used $50,000 and still have $150,000 in assistance to provide.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Orio?
I was asked recently about whether immigration status is considered when folks apply or how that might be a factor in people's application for individual assistance.
So we do not require that they submit a social security number, but they do have to provide information to us of having a lease agreement and then also income verification. So in most cases, in order to have a job, you have to have a social security number.
Could individuals use an employer letter?
Yes, we could, they can use an employer letter. And in most cases, we've had to require that because so many have been just laid off without having income and so the majority have turned in a letter from their employer.
Okay. And how, how is the word getting out? And how could we help get the word out to more folks so that they're able to take advantage of this?
So originally, we did some social media posts. And then Susan, Mayor Seaman, had did a, also a social media post, which then encouraged a couple of the news individuals to contact us. And so it's, it's been provided by, by social media and then also in both the Lost Coast outpost and then Time Standard.
And then also, we had been reached out to by Humboldt Area Foundation as well as the county. And so we provided all the information to Humboldt Area Foundation, to Robert Ward at the county, as well as the North Coast nonprofit. I don't know what the acronym is, but.
Norcan.
Norcan, thank you, that as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's an awesome program. I just was wondering, you know, like, it's like, how can we get more people to do it? You know, it's a fantastic thing to see, so thank you.
Councilmember Castellano, did you have your hand up before? How about you, Councilmember Messner? You have anything to add or say or ask?
Uh, no, thank you. Thank you for the report.
It's an amazing program.
I'm glad we got this done, yeah. It's important to communicate to the community what's happening, so thank you.
And I'd just like to really thank the Finance Department and Kristin Raymond specifically for coming up with this program. It's been a model for a lot of other areas. I know a lot of other municipalities in the area have been looking into something similar to this. And I think it demonstrates us supporting the people that need it the most during these times. So I think it's been a great program.
And it really does address what just an eviction moratorium misses, which is that ability for them to, to not get so deep in debt and stay caught up on their, their rent. So that's great.
I just thought of something else to add.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I wonder, do we have a list of like property managers or landlords in the community that we could send information about this to? Like when people are interacting with their tenants so that they could notify them that this program exists?
They actually have been one of our main outlets is the landlords. I get calls on a regular basis from them and a lot of the clientele come in saying, well, my landlord said this program is available and so they, they definitely are on board. And then also, as Mel was stating, we have had other cities contact us as well in regards to this program and trying to mock something that we have.
Excellent. And I hear that we are getting a lot of calls from people outside of Eureka, so that's a bummer. Yeah, but then other, other cities can join us and that's good. Thank you so much. And now Director, or interim city manager Slattery, do you have anything else to add? Any COVID updates or any other updates?
Nothing currently, but I think that's about it. I'm, I'm hanging on pins and needles waiting for the council report.
Well, let's get it to you then. We'll go ahead and start with, you know, let's start with Councilmember Messner.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say this was, it was much better than being on the last call where there was so much conflict. So this was a lot easier to manage this meeting and thank you all. So I appreciate the work that staff did to try to, to make these calls a little easier for the public to be a part of as well, so, these meetings. So thank you for that. I just wanted to let people know two things. I was appointed last week as co-chair to Cure, which is a council for racial unity restoration and engagement for California. And it includes Nevada and Utah as well. And so there's a committee, well, it's a council on that. So that was exciting just because there is so much happening right now in regard to that. So just letting you guys know, I'm working on that and we'll be able to hopefully bring some things to our community as well. And then also wanted to share that I, many of you know that I'm the director of EPI, which is Empower, Protect and Invest, a human trafficking education and awareness for Humboldt County. And we received a grant, just, just recently received a grant from the county of Humboldt for a capital campaign. So we're actually working in coordination with the National Human Trafficking Hotline and have a local human trafficking hotline that is now working. And there's being, or that, that we've established with that hotline, with the national hotline and are doing education. We are looking for people who would like to be trained in that. And there will also be advertising on some of our bus lines as well as we'd like to put them in the community, in restrooms and places, places up and down in restaurants and bars and gas stations and all of that. So that's something that is happening throughout Humboldt, but it's centered in Eureka. So if there's anyone who is interested in helping distribute those or you own a business and would like that, or also you are interested in being a part of the hotline and being trained for that, please reach out to me at my city council number or email. And with that, I just ask that everyone continue to be diligent so that we can overcome this whole COVID crisis that we're in and appreciate how hard our community has been working toward, toward being safe and doing its due diligence. So I appreciate everyone who's been working hard at that. Thank you.
So I'm going to keep my report brief. Let's see, that's very brief, isn't it? So a group of Eureka volunteers painted Ross Park with the brand colors last week. It's fabulous. If you haven't been by, you should drive by and take a look. You still can't use the playground, but you can certainly enjoy the bright colors. Brings a sense of happiness to the neighborhood, which is really great. Thank you, Councilmember Castellano, who shows up everywhere and helped with that. I appreciate that. Secondly, I've just got a message that people are having a hard time reaching me. So if you're having a hard time reaching me, then you can email me at my city email. You can Facebook message me.
So if you're having a hard time reaching me, then you can email me at my city email, you can Facebook message me, or you can call me. My phone number is on my council page, or it's 707-616-2178. So the whole city has it. If you, if you need to get ahold of me, that's how you do it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Royal.
All right. Well, I just got an extension by Coast Guard orders for three more months, so I will continue to be on active duty up in, in McKinleyville at the Coast Guard Base for what feels like the foreseeable future, helping with COVID response and contact tracing and all of that. So beyond that, it's been keeping me very busy. But beyond that, I have had some really productive meetings lately. I'm going to just bring up a few topics that recently came up and see if there's interest in, to be forthcoming. Leslie and I were both in these meetings, and to get something on the agenda, we, we need the interest of another council member. And it's challenging due to the Brown Act, we can't talk to a majority of the council. So we have these sort of awkward moments where we float our ideas to each other and then have to get someone else to express interest as well. But I have three today. So one of them was to explore some discussion of an ordinance, or to formalize the Chief's Community Advisory Panel, which was enacted under former Police Chief Mills, and Chief Watson has done a wonderful job keeping it active. And there's been some community interest in seeing if that could just come forward and both have a presentation about what they do, and then sort of formalize it a bit more, and to look at how we in the police department, you know, really envision that, and how the community envisions that. So is there interest in talking about that?
So I actually, actually already talked to the chief about bringing forward a presentation, so absolutely.
Cool. We're all talking to him. But he did a really good job not violating the Brown Act and telling us that multiple events have happened. Cool. So that was just one of three. So the next one was around, well, I just wanted to highlight, actually, this isn't something that we need, like, consent to bring forward again, but I wanted to highlight that under our consent calendar, we talked about Measures E funding for a homeless outreach worker position, but we had some conversation about how we could potentially have a program similar to the Kahoots program in Eugene, Oregon, where there's first, first responders to nonviolent crimes, or nonviolent calls, I should say, who are like medical and mental health first aid type workers. And so we talked about how this existing grant funding could be utilized to do that successfully. And City Manager Slattery had, was very enthusiastic about it, and the chief was very open to doing it and exploring how we would, you know, how we'd do the dispatch piece, and how we'd make sure that we're keeping people safe while really implementing a new idea. So I think we can expect to see more coming from that, and I'm super excited about it. And just think it'll take so much pressure off EPD, frankly, to respond to a lot of calls that are probably, could be better responded to by mental health and social work personnel. So I wanted to thank everyone for their openness to that, and just express my excitement around that, and say, like, I hope we hear more about it soon, and that we're able to get more information about how it, how it functions effectively and what the process looks like.
Would that be through community services or through EPD, or?
That's a great question for our city manager.
So the idea of the program would, you know, reaching out to Kahoots and getting an idea of their program, and see what works for us and what doesn't. But the idea would be to start it off as a pilot and work with, you know, as Community Supervisor Davis had, had mentioned, still continuing to work with CSAT and with other functions of EPD to find out, you know, how the dispatch would work, and what would be appropriate calls to send them out to. I'm sure preliminarily, it would start off as, you know, having support from EPD while they're there, and then working to not need that, and, and bringing them out. I think one of the key components is getting the appropriate training for that full-time position, and then also making sure that we have a, a a medical aid person to, to respond with them as well. And so, you know, the, the funding is there to do that. It's just a matter of getting the training and coming up with the program as to what it's going to look like. But initially, we see it as addressing mental health issues, and then maybe expanding that onto other nonviolent calls that EPD gets as well. But it would start off as a pilot and make sure that it works and keeps people safe, and then expanding it once we get our up and running.
So many wonderful, innovative things happening in our city. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, it does sound like we would need, you know, once you have more of an idea about how it will work, and then maybe we will need a presentation, because I bet we'll all be curious to see how it's going to go, and, and just how it will work, and, and how, you know, it'll function within the current funding that we have, and, and the staffing that we have. So I'm very excited about that. And then lastly, do you want to talk about the native plant thing, or do you want me to? Okay, I'm on a roll. We met with a community member who's really interested in seeing our current general plan and zoning code. Do you emphasize the use of native plants in landscaping? But this individual was pointing out that we could have more assertive language, requiring a certain percentage of plants to be native plants, and helping with habitat for birds and bees and critters, but also, you know, being more drought tolerant and effective as landscaping, and keeping native species alive and thriving in your, our city. So I'd be interested in seeing that come forward. I, I would prefer personally that it be in conjunction with other zoning code updates or other updates that we need to make anyway, just so that we're utilizing staff's time effectively. But if folks are interested in that coming back to us, that's an idea that we could consider later. Okay. Cool.
We don't have any general plan updates happening anytime in the immediate future.
Good point. And we could also do, you know, an ordinance. I imagine there are probably a range of options. There wouldn't necessarily have to be a zoning code update. We don't have, we also talked about some options for outreach, so that people understand, like, what native plants might be suitable for their gardens, and have more materials at City Hall that we can give out to people. But that was, I just wanted to bring that up. I think that's all I have.
Councilmember Castellano.
Great. Let's see, I wasn't sure, because I've brought it up, but I'm just not sure where to add the idea for developing a, a community grant for citizen-led equity and neighborhood resilience projects. Is that something that I need to get consensus around still, or did that, have I already done that?
To decide.
Okay, so I'm good.
So what we're, what you're asking for is, are you looking for funding?
I just want to know, I mean, obviously, it's not an agenda item, so we're not making a decision on it, but just, I can't, I couldn't remember if I had gotten interest in seeing that idea develop more.
I think it could be a budget-related item, since it's a budgetary item.
So what we could do is, I, I've spoken with Chief Watson, and Chief Watson is, is a big proponent of it, and is willing to find the money in his, in his budget to make that happen. So what we could do is, we could come back with a report to receive direction on what kind of the program would look like, and then we could get a council direction on whether or not that's something they want to move forward with.
That's, okay. I think that was really, my question is, what is it that we want to do with it right now? And if, and that's really it, it's finding, finding out where the funding's going to come from to do it. I've, I've been really interested in it since the first Good Neighbor Week, which should happen sometime in September, possibly. And anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
Let's see, I've been continuing to participate in the Regional Economic Resilience Consortium, and attend the Eureka Main Street Board meetings, and have lots of conversations around diversity, equity and inclusion. And so I just want to also thank all of the people in our community doing lots of work around that. You know, I brought up a lot of ideas earlier, and for sure, many of them came out of conversations with other people. And so just to really recognize that there are a lot of people who've been doing really good work with that in our community. And, yeah, that's all for now. It's nice to see everyone here, and it's nice to see you there. City Manager Slattery. Okay, that's all.
All right. And so with that, I just have a final note, a final note. It's very brief. I don't talk a lot. It says, if you care about your community and you care about the economy, wear your mask. And that's it. With that, we're adjourned.